I'd like to call the Marmell City Council Meeting to order. If I would, I'd ask you please rise and stand for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this city which you've allowed us to govern over, Lord. We'd ask you to be with the victims of the recent storm, Lord. We'd ask you to be with the tornado victims and the flood victims throughout Arkansas that experienced devastation last Thursday night. We'd ask you to be with them and comfort them as only you can and help them with the healing process and the recovery process, Lord. We wish to help us to be mindful of their struggles, Lord, and us continue to reach out and serve them in any way that we can, Lord. We wish to be with our troops that are serving overseas and protect them and keep them out of harms way. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have no special guests or announcements. Next item is approval of the minutes from the April 21 regular meeting. All the council members have a copy of those minutes in their pocket. Are there any corrections or additions?
I know we approve them.
Been motion second that the council approved the minutes from the last meeting. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, roll call, or excuse me, all in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Next item is public comment. Okay, the, we actually have, we had someone submit some items prior to the agenda deadline, so we actually put Mr. Ray Turnage listed under public comment. Also have several cards here on other items. Now, several of them are on items on the agenda, so if it's okay with the persons who wish to comment, we'll just hold those till we get to that time. Mr. Unruh?
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Bullington?
Yes.
Okay, all right, and then I have three others that are on different items here, so that, well, one of those is also on the council agenda also. All right, so, Mr. Turnage, we'd like to hear from you. If you would, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ray Turnage. Live at 122 Manitow here in Marmell and have since '03 been very happy with that and very happy with Marmell. And we've just run into a little issue that we'd just like to ask you all's help and guidance and some suggestions that we might make. Let me introduce to you, I've got two guests, I guess. My son, Chris Turnage, and my attorney, Jim Pender. And Jim is going to explain in a few minutes some research he's found out about, but as you can see from your picture and from your sheet that kind of looks like this, everybody should have a sheet kind of like this, and that just kind of simply makes this a picture of kind of what's going on there. And we've enjoyed on our deck and our kitchen windows and all for a good long while of the beauty in the back. And when we bought the house in '03, the builder at that time told us, and it may be wrong terminology he used, but he told us behind us was green space and that we wouldn't have to worry about a house or an apartment being built behind us, and so that was another plus for us to buy the house. So, I'm not going to take much time and maybe try to answer any questions when Mr. Pender gets through, but he's researched a lot and gone through a lot, and we've tried to just lay it out, and it just kind of looks like, as you can see from the picture there, that we now have a whole different view than what we've had for, since '03. So, I appreciate all y'all do for our community and I appreciate your time and putting into serving on the council, and I think that's very important, especially to have good people on the board, so I thank you for that. So, I'm going to ask Jim if he'll come and share some research and some data he's found out about, and then when he finishes, we'd be glad to try to answer any questions. We're just kind of looking for some suggestions and some help.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Attorney, members of the board, my name's Jim Pender, and thank you for this opportunity to come before you today. I've given you a few little handouts. I hope this doesn't get too confusing, but I'll do my best. First, I've given you the restrictions and covenants on an adjacent subdivision to Mr. Turnage's subdivision, and I just wanted you to see that. If you will, if you look at the bottom left corner, you'll see tract A. Well, that's the track we're going to talk about today. It was actually originally common space in another subdivision, and you can see that, I think it's on page four, paragraph three at the bottom, it talks about common area. The area designated on plat A is tract A is common area. And so, that was a green space in another subdivision. This subdivision was platted and formed in 2004. As you heard Mr. Turnage tell you, he bought his lot in 2003. And Madam Attorney, I apologize, I ran out of...
Okay.
So, I hope you, and I, thank you. Okay, what I'd like to look at next, if you don't mind, is the Bill of Assurance for the subdivision that Mr. Turnage lives in. If you look at the plat on the back, you'll see at the very top, Lot 203. That's the lot that Mr. Turnage lives in. And the adjacent lot, 204, is the lot that Mr. Turnage is having a little fence dispute with. And as you'll see, there's no tract A, common area, green space behind that at that time. When Mr. Turnage bought his lot, this was, you know, not platted at that time. And if you will, in both of these bills of assurance, but more particularly in this one, it says that it cannot be amended. Of course, the Bill of Assurance, as always, incorporates the plat, and it says it cannot be amended unless there's a vote of 75 percent. But also in the same paragraph, that's key, based on some law that's occurred in our state recently, that these covenants and restrictions will run till a certain date in the future, which is 2030. Well, the Arkansas Supreme Court interpreted, when those two provisions are in the same paragraph, they said, "Well, you have to have 100 percent vote to amend the restrictions." It says until after that 2030 arrives. Well, the Arkansas legislature thought that was a problem, and they ran a fix for that a couple of years ago, but the fix says if those two provisions are in the same paragraph, you still have to have 100 percent, and the fix doesn't apply. So, what I would submit to you is that 100 percent of the lot owners, according to Arkansas law, would have to agree to amend this plat and Bill of Assurance to bring in this green space from outside the subdivision. And then, the final document I gave you is the actual amendment to the restrictive covenants that occurred in 2006. Again, Mr. Turnage bought in 2003. The other subdivision was formed in 2004 that had the green space. And this amendment, what it did, and we don't know the exact nature of, there was some dispute involving a previous owner of Lot 204, the adjacent lot, between them and the developer, and there was a pump station being developed on this triangle, what I referred to earlier as tract A, that was in the, you know, the green space, the common space in the other subdivision. And the dispute resulted in the developer giving the owner of Lot 204 this land, but this, which was tract A, but it, this land was in another subdivision, green space in another subdivision, and there was no vote, no actual, Mr. Turnage does not recall ever getting any notice whatsoever of this amendment to the plat. We don't think anyone else in the subdivision got a notice. And so, this amendment, this replat occurred, and if you look at the very last page, you'll see the replat. I apologize it's so small, but you'll see Lot 204R, which is what used to be Lot 204, and extends around, as you see, it extends around behind Mr. Turnage's property, and that's where the issue arises. And you also see that that property behind Mr. Turnage's property is a access and utility easement now. So, the city, or this, some municipality, some division of the city has an easement covering this property. So, the issues arisen, first, Mr. Turnage and his neighbor, the subsequent purchaser of this Lot 204R, discussed this issue, and Mr. Turnage tried, you know, work out a resolution. He did try to buy this property from him and have another replat to solve the problem, but the problem has arisen that this neighbor has erected a fence with the back of the fence facing Mr. Turnage's view or his backyard on that 27, and I can't read it, I'm sorry. I don't know if anyone else can read. 27.93 feet, he's erected a fence across that, blocking Mr. Turnage's view. And when you buy a lot in a subdivision, you rely upon the restrictive covenants not being amended. That's what you, there's a value given to platted subdivisions that it's not, things aren't going to change, and Mr. Turnage relied on him being able to have that view. He had it for many years. And he's given, there's some pictures we laid, I don't know if y'all could circulate the pictures, but you can see it's really blocked his view off his backyard and really diminished, we think, the value of his property. So, you know, we come to you for help, for a resolution of this matter. You know, surely it's in the discretion of this city council to not allow someone to build a fence on a utility easement. Surely that's within your discretion. That might be a simple solution, because, you know, the big thing is this is blocking his view, and there's no purpose, there's no utility in having a fence across that one part. So, I'm not sure the purpose of building the fence across that one part, but that's what's been built. So, we ask for your help, guidance, and I'd love to answer any questions.
Well, I will tell you, fences are built in utility easements all over Marmell. We take them down on a regular basis to do drainage repairs, so they are allowed in utility easements. And it's common throughout most cities that that is the case, and basically, you're responsible, you're typically responsible for them, but most utility companies will take them down and put them back if they have to take them down, so, yeah.
And I realize that, but I think it's within your discretion not to allow them, I think is what I was trying to say.
I don't think so. We want, we don't allow structures within utility easements, but we do allow fences. So, yeah, per our fence ordinance. Alderman Lewis?
I'll have a few questions for you, sir. It's obviously going to take me a little bit of time to sort of digest some of this, and so...
Yes, sir.
If I show a lack of knowledge or enthusiasm one way or the other, it's mainly because I'd still like to digest a lot of this. One question I have is, as I look at this photograph, there is a house off in the distance. Orient me, that house that I'm looking at, what lot is that on?
That's not a house.
That is a pump station.
Oh, that's the pump station.
It's on AR, tract AR dash R.
No, this one right here.
Yeah.
I may have a different photograph.
Yeah, you're good.
Sorry.
Someone's throwing out the same photograph.
That's a fine pump station, if it is.
Yeah, it is a fine pump station.
It's brick.
Well, no, it has a garage door, the picture that he's looking at.
I think that was part of the settlement.
You have a different picture than I did. See, yours shows that.
Okay, so that is the station there that I'm looking at. Okay, okay.
So, they can get in and remove the pumps and stuff.
Okay.
I think the original controversy, there was an issue about how the looks of the, the aesthetics of the pump station, and part of the settlement was to fancy it up.
Yeah, indeed they did. All right, next question. Have you spoken with the neighbor and what was the resolution of that?
Ray, do you want to answer that?
Well, I did speak with him a lot and try to work this out, and the only way we found out about this was one night, just before dark, there was five or six people in my backyard with some flashlights. And I went out and tried to introduce myself and figure out who was there and what were they doing, and they finally were looking for this pin that is over here on that. So, I tried to offer to buy it, I tried to offer to pay any community charges if we had to replat the lot. I offered to do everything I could possibly do to work with him on it, and it didn't happen. And then, this fence, the little short fence there, 27 feet, just appeared, and so, nothing that we, I could really do. And then, but we tried, we tried awful hard, and I've had some of the council people come by just to look and see physically what was going on there with it, but we tried everywhere in the world to make it work, and he just assumed that it was his property so he could do, you know, on it what he wanted to.
So, the answer, when you asked, did you ask him to remove it?
I did. Asked him if he would hold up till we could even talk to you all and get a settlement, would he hold up on it? And he said, "No," he was going to do it, so.
When did it, when did this fence go up?
Easter Sunday morning, which is, what, two or three weeks back.
And you said that, obviously, there was that move to have the subdivision replatted with an amendment, and who would have initiated that process?
We think the former owners of that lot, the ones that were in the dispute with the city, or the developer at that time, Mr. Soulsby.
Mike and Carol Soulsby were the owners of that lot and that house.
And they're the ones that, if you'll see, if you could read the signatures, they are the ones that signed it, and of course, the developer had to sign it as well.
Okay.
But again, it's my contention that you had to have 100 percent.
Who was the developer, do you know?
Dehaven.
Dehaven.
Yeah, it's got a different name, but it's basically Dehaven.
Okay. I'll defer at this time for any other questions. Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions, Alderman?
Just one here. I noticed the fence, the rough part of the fence is facing outward, I guess, from whoever built it. Is that proper? Isn't it supposed to be the other way around?
Only if it's visible from a street or a walking path.
This is facing my house, and my deck, and my patio here, so this fence is between us over here. This one goes down between us.
Well, but that doesn't qualify.
Yeah, it has to be like along a street.
Along a street, I mean...
Is he on that spot?
Yeah.
That's what he claims. Yes, sir. And that leaves me then trying to put, you know, something here or trying to do something, but that's facing. Thank you, that's the only other question I've got right now. It's, I'm sort of with Alderman Lewis here. I have a rough time digesting all this and get it all straight, but...
Well, there being, no further questions?
There are some more questions, I'm sorry, Mr. Alderman Johnson?
Yes, just a point in my opinion, and it's just strictly my opinion. To me, it's a crying shame when two neighbors can't get together and establish something that is workable for both of them. I mean, it's a bad situation. I've been over there, I've seen it, but the neighbor has to, if, excuse me, if the lot property is his, he's got to concede some to. Hey, come on, this, we're a great community and giving up and sharing with each other is what it's all about. Golly, I mean, why would I want to make my neighbor mad if I do? Hey, I moved a light pole that was near his pole because he didn't want it near his pole. Hey, you do things like that to be neighborly. And I'm sorry, I don't even know the guy, but by the same token, I went over there, and this is a deplorable situation, that someone can put a pits across part of your backyard. And, okay, we can talk ownership and all that stuff, there's a problem. Sorry, that's my opinion.
Alderman Hoag?
Well, I'm just looking at this plat here, and the 27.93 feet, which I believe is the back of Mr. Turnage's yard.
Part of it.
And then, this property on the other side of it, in this little triangle, appears to be part of, is that part of the utility easement?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Then what in the world allows him to be able to come over here on your backyard? You know, his property ends here. This, even if he was going to do something about the easement, it looks to me like he would have put a fence there.
His property ends per the second plat at that angle point.
It ends at the end of the 27.93, where the point is. That's his property. That's a shared property line between Mr. Turner and...
Turnage.
Turnage. But this where it says access and utility easement actually belongs to the person at Lot 204?
That's correct.
Who gave it to him?
Well, Mr. Dehaven.
We don't know that. Has anyone proved that?
There's a plat that they both signed, that you have in your...
Dehaven didn't even own it at the time, the people that were living there, I don't think.
You know, one of the things I'm really concerned about, and Mr. Pender, I think that we may have spoke on the phone some time ago, is that I think it's important to define what you're asking of the council and what they can or cannot do. This council is really not a court of law. They're not equipped to make findings as to whether a deed was proper or conveyance was proper. So, I think it's important to define exactly what you and Mr. Turnage are asking the council to do, because fact finding as to whether or not the deed or the conveyance of that property is not something this council can do.
I appreciate that, and we are just asking for guidance and help if you do have any jurisdiction to stop the construction of this fence, and you may not. I would submit to you again that, and I hate to be repetitive, but according to Arkansas law, you had to have 100 percent unanimous consent, and Mr. Turnage didn't even get to vote, didn't get notice of this amendment of the plat, who had adjacent property. And so, I would submit to you this, I hate to use words illegal, but it was an illegal replat of this property, because you had, according to Arkansas law, had to have 100 percent of the people in that subdivision vote on amending the plat to include new property that was actually in another subdivision, platted subdivision, as green space. And so, I would just submit to you that I don't know if you have any jurisdiction, and we're asking for guidance, whether you do or not have any jurisdiction to do anything about this.
I don't, I, based on what I've seen, I don't think that the council does have jurisdiction to declare it an illegal replat. I think that's a, that's a legal question, a question of law that a court would have to make. In terms of the construction of the fence, I have, while it's, certainly I understand that it's offensive to Mr. Turnage, it doesn't appear to violate any of the provisions of our code, which establishes where you can or cannot build a fence. It's absolutely permissible for the lot owner, even the unidentified lot, which would I would soon be in Mountain Terrace, which runs the, you know, along the rest of this property here, they could come in and put a fence all the way across there, and it would be perfectly permissible. And so, having a fence for that portion, and again, I've just taken, I'm just looking at it and reviewing it as we're describing it, but there's not anything that I see that just violates the provisions of our fence ordinance clearly, you know, per se.
Well, and I guess my question is, does the city have discretion whether to issue a permit for this fence?
Well, the permits are issued by the code enforcement department, by Mr. Morley, and typically, they're appealed when they're either granted or denied. They're appealed to the city council, they're not issued by the city council. So, but again, if it meets all the standards set forth in the code, I don't know that the council does have the discretion to deny it at that point. We, you know, the city code is a set of standards, and those are truly maximum standards, and we can't require more. You know, we can allow less, but we can't require more, and if they've met those standards, I'm not sure how the council could have discretion to deny it.
Well, and, you know, we're just trying to, we don't want to get involved in litigation. We're trying to find a very, the least intrusive manner possible to try to solve this issue.
I understand. Okay, I'm not through yet.
Me either.
All right, well, but it was, the fence was permitted by code enforcement because it met all the rules and regulations of the city of Marmell. And Madam Senator is correct, the rest of that lot could be fenced by the adjoining rear lot owner, which is Mountain Terrace Development. Well, it is, but they still could have that right to do that, if they wanted to. Also, Mr. Pender referred to it as open space. I didn't see anywhere in here where he referred to tract A as open space. He referred to it as common area, and he referred to it as structures and lighting and landscaping would still be owned by the declarant, which would be Mr. Dehaven who developed that, as I understood that. So, that would still be his property, and it never said it was open space, it said common property, which that gets used both ways loosely back and forth by the city and by other people, but I just wanted that to be very clear. And so, and I don't know when the development of Mountain Terrace was done, and so, I don't know who told Mr. Turnage that there was open space behind his property, but it was never zoned open space or declared open space on a plat, even on O, on Mountain Terrace, I don't think, so.
Well, the, just for your place, the restrictive covenants were filed in 2004.
For Mountain Terrace?
Well, for this area.
Yes, for this area, yes, sir. But Mountain Terrace is the adjoining subdivision to the north. That's not any of these lots shown here.
My next question was, is, does Mr. Turnage have a copy of the survey of his lot when he bought the lot? You know, this, he was saying that they found this pin 27.93 feet over in his lot, and I just wondered if his survey shows that same thing, or does his survey show a corner pin?
My corner pins are 100 feet from where the 27-foot starts over there, from that pin, 100 feet to the next pin. I've got a copy of all that.
Okay, so, so this 27.93 really is not in question, other than you thought it was green space or con...
Well, that was the builder that told us that, and he could have easily misspoke. That's been in '03, and so, he could have said green space and not knowing the terminology. But my survey and my lots are the 100-foot...
100 foot from the edge of your property here that's adjoining 204A?
You want to put that map back? There you go.
Let me just show you this that I'm talking about. This is, this is the edge of your lot, and this is the back of your lot. Now, is your pin right there?
Yes, ma'am. Right here and 100 foot over there.
Well, it looks to me like the issue would be with the surveyors.
No, ma'am. It's the land to the, to the north of this property.
That is his, that, that, what he's pointing to you is his pin. There's maybe another one. It's a shared property line.
Probably behind him, okay.
Yes, it's a shared property line.
Alderman Anderson?
I've got a question about tract A. So, only a portion of tract A was actually deeded to the Soulsbys?
That's correct.
And so, I think what started that whole thing is that they didn't bring it to the pin, they brought it past the pin from whatever this line is, where they, where they decided to cut the tract A in half, which is 505, and that's what created the 27.93, because they didn't bring...
That's not correct.
Why couldn't they shoot the line from...
Tract A was already created before they did a replat on it.
They gave them the whole tract.
They gave them the entire eastern portion of tract A.
Okay, so that was already platted out?
Yes.
That line, 505, 09...
That's south, I think that's S05.
Oh, south, I'm sorry.
He's looking at this one.
Yeah, yeah.
That line, that line was already, that wasn't something they just arbitrarily...
No, that was done on this plat right here.
Okay, because I couldn't see that on that plat, I'm sorry.
Well, it's, it's very small, but where it says tract A on there, it says 13772, right under there, I believe is what I'm reading there, or 12. It's got a line right through the middle of it. It's 137 point something.
It looks like they added some property to that triangle to form what is now A-dash-R.
Hmm, I don't think so.
You don't think so, okay.
No, sir.
Because, well, I'm just going by the shape of the triangle.
So, that same line, the south 098, is the same as the 137-92 part of tract A?
Yes.
Okay, that's why I don't, because it looks like a totally different line to me, so...
Well, I mean, if you turn this plat just like this and hold your other plat like this, I mean, they're going to, I mean, you can see that it's the same line.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Alderman Johnson?
Just a comment, I mean, you know, I just, I can't believe that we're sitting here discussing this. It looks like to me this gentleman made an offer to even buy the property, you know, whatever it is. What is the problem? We need to sit down with the individual and find out, and there's got to be a compromise. We don't need to be spending time here in legal aspects and everything. You know, hey, legality is what's got us in a lot of our problems in the United States, but we need to sit down and do what's right and with each other. And, you know, surely the guy would understand a reasonable representation for a guy not having a fence across a half of his yard or quarter of his yard, when he's got a beautiful view over there. I've been over there. I've seen the view. It's just absolutely ridiculous. When I went over there, there were poles. When I went over the back over there, then I see, now they got a fence. But, I mean, come on. We've got to be better neighbors than this. We've got to be able to compromise with an individual. Has anyone sat down with the guy to try to compromise with him? See if there's something from a neutral standpoint. That's just my opinion, and guess what? And that a dollar and give me a cup of coffee.
Alderman Mosley?
I'd like to hear if you got answered. The fence did have a permit, the owner had a permit?
It did.
Everybody legally did what was right, I don't think. You know, I don't think anybody did anything illegal, to my knowledge.
Well.
I just wrapped things up, just asking if there's any recommendation you can give us on what course of action you think we should take. We would be appreciative of that. We're trying to, as someone said, you said, we're trying to be neighborly and trying to work things out here. There's no, the odd thing is, there's no function for this fence where it's built. I mean, it doesn't fence anything in or fence anything out. It's just been erected. I don't want to ever infer any motive of anybody, because I don't know what's in the neighbor's head, but there's no function for that fence.
Okay, I've got a couple of lights coming back on. Alderman Lewis?
You intrigued me with your comment. Would you like to wait?
No, go ahead.
Okay. It is, and that was sort of what I was about to mention, was I don't quite see the logic in why it was constructed that way. Perhaps there will be some additional light shed upon that. I do agree with Madam City Attorney that we are quite limited in our options as to mitigate this issue. One question I did have, though, is that there was a fence permit that was granted. There is an appeal process. What is the timeline in which someone could appeal a fence?
I'd have to look at it to be positive on that. I wouldn't think it would be, you know, less than 30 days. That's a typical timeframe.
Okay. Seeing as how it just went up Easter Sunday, I would encourage your client to indeed explore that. And then also, as another possible compromise, if you continue to run into difficulty, there are, of course, fences that are, have the gaps in them that are a picket style. You know, that might not be the best of all scenarios, but perhaps that would alleviate some of the feeling of being fenced in. So I'll leave that with you.
Alderman Hoag?
I was just going to say, I agree with Madam City Attorney. I do not believe that we have any authority, one way or the other, in this. I certainly sympathize with Mr. Turnage. It would be wonderful if the neighbor had an attorney, and the two of you could sit down and maybe work out some sort of an agreement.
That would be wonderful.
And maybe if he doesn't have an attorney, maybe you could contact him, and he might be more amicable to speaking with you. And maybe you could work something out. I certainly hope something gets worked out.
I'll try to make a phone call.
Thank you.
Alderman Anderson?
I want to echo the same sentiments, is that we, I don't know that we have that jurisdiction, but I definitely want to offer my sympathy and support. And just like Alderman Johnson said, you know, we ultimately all live in this community together, and we live in closed quarters. And, you know, it's hard whenever we have to deal with different personalities. And I wish that we could all get along, but it doesn't happen. You know, it doesn't happen. And that's why we have eight men on the council, or women, men and women, and it's to help things go along. But I do want to offer my sympathy and support on this issue. Thank you.
Just in response to your question about any recommendation, I'll be, first of all, when, tomorrow I'll be at City Hall, I'll be happy to pull the fence permit and take a look at it and see if there's anything that, you know, appears to be in error on it. While, you know, it clearly, it doesn't fence anything. We don't require it to actually enclose. There are a number of fences, and I know there have been at least one other controversial fence that didn't fence anything in, but yet it met all of the requirements of the code, and so therefore it had to be allowed. So I'll be happy to do that, and I'll do that tomorrow and get in touch with you. But if the issue is one of the legality of the replat or the enforcement of the bill of assurance, I think that that would have to go before a circuit court for a decision, even though I never want to suggest that someone should, you know, go into litigation. I don't know that in this, if it's not able to be worked out, I don't know that you have an option in this case.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pender, Mr. Turnage. We appreciate y'all coming. And it's like everyone says, I mean, we have our rules, we have our regulations, and when someone meets most of those, then we allow the fence permits and that, so when they meet all those, but when we allow the fence permits. So, and maybe there is a way to sit down and do it, but we can't order that the neighbor sit down and mediate or discuss this situation either. We don't have that authority either. So even though that's been expressed, that we don't have that authority, so.
Thank you for everyone's time.
All right, thank you.
You may have answered my question. My question was, is there anything wrong with the two Aldermen and us going over and sit down and talking with the guy and see what could be?
Not if you want to do that as a personal. I don't know if you can go representing the city on that, but, yeah. Especially if a lawsuit comes out of it, but, yeah.
I'll go talk personally.
Okay. Thank Mr. Turnage. Okay, yes, sir, Mr. Turnage.
That's one quick question. Is the new fence ordinance that has just been in place a few months, would it require the other side of the fence be turned around?
No, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Next public comment card I have is from Mr. Rick Scott. Mr. Scott? Please state your name and address for the record, please.
Well, for the mayor, I live at PO Box 13135.
Because that's what he put on his comment.
Well, that's cramped quarters.
Yes, it is. Yes, very small. I'm going to talk, I heard people talking, I think last time or time before, when I was in here. They were talking about, everybody hear me? Okay. I'm Rick Scott, by the way, in case you, everybody knew me, all right. Water Authority. And I happened to run into a big sheaf of papers having to do with a water authority, which is what the Improvement District 500 is talking about going into, making a deal with the Arkansas Natural Resources people and talking to you people. And so I just, I have seen this before. It's been a while, back when it was brand new. If you want to be really entertained, look up mobility in the laws. That's even more entertaining. This doesn't directly affect me at the moment, but it could, because they're including my property in part of the area that they say they're going to be in charge of. And I have, just looking through here, and then I went back and read the law itself as to what it was doing and why it was doing it. And as I've mentioned to you before, I don't like the improvement districts that keep on going. I was part of an improvement district, one of the commissioners on improvement district. We paid off our bonds. We went home. We closed it down. That was it. This thing keeps on going forever and ever, and the bad thing about it is that there's no oversight. Nobody other than the directors that are in there own it. There's no board, there's no actual citizens that go in there and say yes or no. There's no membership. In fact, the new one doesn't say anything. It says there will be no members. There's, this country was formed on the idea that the citizens are pretty much doing whatever they need to do, and the government is supposed to be those things that we cannot do as well for ourselves. And so you form a government. It doesn't say, but they're elected. All forms of government should be elected. These people aren't. They're wanting to go to an authority, which is going to put another layer between you and the legislature, who has the only power to do anything for you on this. Okay? There are no members on this authority. There are going to be five directors. Now, when I was listening to the discussions about it, it sounded like, okay, we're going to put a couple city people on this, and then as their terms come up, we may put them back in there. We may get a couple of other city people. I don't see that. I don't see that at all. I see five people getting on there, and they're on there. And as far as going back to the city, you guys have lost complete control of it. You have no authority on it, no oversight. The other thing, by granting, by creating this authority, what you're doing is you're allowing this, what's now an improvement district, which has limited ability to raise money, for only specific things, as I remember, virtually unlimited authority to raise money, and go pretty much anyplace they want to. They have to go back to the other commission, Natural Resources, and say, can we do this? And we're talking about commissioners unelected, talking to commissioners unelected, can we do this? This is not what we formed this country for. You really need to take another look at this, or why you would be doing this. The other thing, looking through it based upon casual glances, they're forming these because you may have nonprofits throughout the state that can't raise money or can't do it as cheaply as if they were a government entity. And so this was provided supposedly at the time for those nonprofits, and it so states that the nonprofits, because of the need to get cheap money, cheaper money, that they can form these authorities. Doesn't say anything about improvement districts being switched over, okay? And specifically says you can't, you know, you can't go into the tax exempt ones. You can do a nonprofit, you can be somewhat tax exempt, but this is for those limited nonprofits, not improvement districts, who are government already, nonprofits are not, and have some access to funds, some limited. You guys, city of Marmel, will be completely shut out of the water and waste. You'll have no authority. Not that you have a whole lot right now, but you're only one layer away from going to the legislature. My suggestion would be you get every representative and senator that you know of, and get them in and sit them down and say, how do we get rid of this thing? This is evil. They need to be elected. They need to be under a governmental control. This is basic America. You should never be any question about this. Why has it been going on this long? I have no idea. The original purposes was for a group of neighbors, which is what we had up in my area, get together and they form this, you get a lawyer, or you've got a lawyer. Yeah, well, you have to, you know? And then you sell bonds, and you put the stuff in, you build it, whatever it is you're building, and when you get the bonds paid off, you go home. It's done. It doesn't last forever. These things, when they got some of the bonds paid off or whatever they were doing, should have been turned over to the city or made into a regular corporation with stockholders, so that they have some accountability. They have no accountability. They don't go back to the Public Service Commission or anything else. So, again, just not dwelling on it, even though I have been, sorry. Get on my soapbox. And it specifically says there are not going to be any members, so this is not a true corporation, okay? It is not a true corporation. It is a government entity appointed in its entirety. And you say, well, they don't make any money. They can't draw salaries. They've got wives and sons and daughters and nieces and nephews that they can put in there, all perfectly legal. They can make tons of money, and now you're increasing their ability to raise taxes. The people of Marmel are going to love this entity. They can go where they want to. And you look at the map, you didn't get a map, did you? He's got a map. I've got a map. You guys don't have a map? Just funning you there. You have a map? No, you don't have a map? It's just the idea. They can go darn near anyplace they want to. They're already going out, on this current one, they're going outside the county. They're going up into Faulkner County. I'm done. Any questions?
Mr. Scott, I got a question for you. The water lines that you did with your improvement district, who maintains those now?
Central Arkansas Water.
What are they? What are they?
CAW?
Yes.
Central Arkansas Water. It's a water company.
It's a water company, but how's its commissioners?
Oh, I don't like that. I don't like it either, but they have a lot better water.
So, I mean, you have that system in your area, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Just because we have one bad system that we have no control over, but I think the city of Little Rock and North Little Rock have some, a lot of control over those commissioners. But what you're, you're not in their position where they're doing it, where you're issuing a lot of water. You have no water. You have no wastewater. You can't promise anybody any water or anything else when somebody comes in.
Neither can Central Arkansas Water, if you're having to use improvement district.
I bet they can. I don't deal with them, but I'm just saying, what your circumstances are going into this possible agreement is you're dealing with somebody who you will have no oversight or control of. You won't be able to deal with them anymore than you have been.
Okay. Thank you. Alderman Mosley?
Yeah, Mr. Scott, you're preaching to the choir with me here. I've been advocating for a long time that we do all we can here on the city council to try to get, and I keep calling it a democratic form of process in the water sewer function here in Marmel. We've tried to engage the commissioners of that district. They've refused to talk to us in that regard on a formal basis, and they are doing a conversion here. I'm not a lawyer, and if anybody that knows how to get more toward a democratic process in this is around, I'd like to know about it, because I'd like to.
I think you have to go back to the legislature. You have to not sign, not do any dealing with them now, and then you go back to your legislators and say, if you want to continue having our goodwill, you don't talk about getting them elected or anything, but goodwill is what can you do about these kind of situations? Not just here in Marmel, but anyplace. You need to have some oversight.
There's a little bit of that going on, but I agree we need to have checks and balances. I've raised the issue of updating the law that we've got now that requires MSID 500 to come before us for any rate increases. And I've had a couple of email conversations with the city attorney. We're not there yet.
I would suggest to you that you have no authority over them for rating. You pass all laws you want to. Unless the legislature passes the law and says thou shalt, I don't think you guys, that's my reading.
Anyway, we're still working on that, and I hope the city attorney will get with me on that, and we'll finish our discussion.
I'm working on a memo to you that should be in the next packet.
Working on a?
Memo to you that should be in the next.
An ordinance? Okay. What about, what about those two laws? Did you have a chance to look at them that were referenced?
Working on a memo to those that will be, that you'll get before the next packet.
Okay, all right. I'll look forward to that. Like I said, we're, I'm trying to do all I can, and I hope, I wish, I wish the rest of the council was enthusiastic in that regard as I am, and maybe we'll get there.
Yeah. Well, good luck. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scott. Next public comment card I have is, I believe it's Gavin Roberts. Is that correct? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Gavin Roberts, and I live up in, at 66 St. Lynch Drive here in Marmel. And before I get to this proposal, I want to see if anyone has a copy of the proposal on hand, along with the picture as well.
Everybody should have a copy.
I've got it here, Gavin.
Okay. And also, I do have a copy on hand of the Toadum Big Legend, in case anyone wants to see it. This proposal is to ask Marmel City Council if Boy Scout Troop 295, located at First United Methodist Church here in Marmel, located at First United Methodist Church here in Maumell, may have permission to use the Maumell City icon to indicate where Troop 295's origins are from. The following two paragraphs state the history of the Totem and bead necklaces, and should ask, add some context to the proposal. Native Americans be the jewelry came up as early as 880, which served as a talisman for protection against any threat that may come a person's way. At the start, they used seashells and stones as the main material. However, it wasn't until Europeans started to come to the Americans and basically explore and colonize it that they started to use the glass beads in their jewelry making, which some of the tribes do mention them as little spirit seeds. The tribal totem tells what tribe the person came from, and beads that come with it tells of how, of all the major events that the person has experienced in his whole lifetime, such as marriages. In Boy Scouts, the totem, which can also be called an amulet, represents what troop and patrol the scout is from. One can also add the council, district, and say that scout came from. The beads basically tell, state of all the adventures that the scout has gone through in his entire scout career. And like I said, on page two is, is a sample totem on basically how the Maumell City icon is going to be used.
So the request before the council is the Boy Scout Troop 295 is requesting permission to use the Maumell City rings, which are copyrighted with the City of Maumell. And this council has to grant that permission for anybody to use those rings. Alderman Lewis?
Gavin, where do you go to school?
Maumell High School.
Great, great. I would make a motion that we have this on the agenda for our next meeting, for a possible approval of the request. It would probably be wise that we allow a couple of weeks to go by. Is that going to conflict with any of your timeframes, Gavin? Gavin, on when you're wanting to get these put together?
Um, no.
Okay. So let's, if it's agreeable, let's let a couple of weeks air out, and then we can see if we have any comments about that. But make a motion, we put that on our next meeting. And Gavin, I can tell you, I'm feeling pretty positive about it. So thank you for coming and seeing us.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to put this as an item on the next council's agenda to be formally voted on by the council. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Norris?
If we wanted to, could we pass this through an oral motion?
You could. I would, anytime you allow the use of the trademarked rings, I would suggest that you, you know, this appears to be a drawing, which is fine. That may be the exact way it'll be used. But that you approve the manner in which it will be used specifically, so that you retain pretty tight control over that. If this is exactly the way that it'll be used, then an oral motion at this point would be fine.
Is this sample how it is going to be used? Or is this just a quick?
That, that is a quick, quick draw of how it's going to look like. I mean, the final version of the totem itself may be slightly different, but otherwise, it should be the same as it is right now.
Thank you. Alderman Hoag?
In the past, we've been very protective of allowing anyone to use our city icon. I personally will be voting no. Not because I don't like Boy Scouts. I just don't think that, you know, we didn't allow the library. There are just several people have come before us, and we didn't allow them to use the icons. And I, I just, I'll be voting no.
Alderman Mosley?
I guess I have a question kind of for the mayor and the city attorney on that. Is that, if we approved it in this one case, is that going to have everybody else coming to us looking to do the same thing for various things? Or for profit, for T-shirts?
Well, that's, that's what they do. They come to the council. I mean, so anyone who wants to use it has to come to the council.
We, are we, would we?
This is not, certainly not the first request.
Would we be setting a precedent here to where we've got to say yes on future ones?
No. If you evaluate it on a case-by-case basis, and, you know, you determine the use of it, whether or not it's an appropriate use, that's the council's decision.
Okay. Do you or the mayor have any problems with this? That you can avoid?
If that's an issue for the council to decide whether or not you feel like it's an appropriate use of the trademark. You are considered the owners of the real property of the, or the personal property of the city. You handle those things. That's one of the things. This is personal property of the city, the ownership of that trademark. So if you feel it's an appropriate use, then I don't have objections.
And Alderman Hoag is correct. The council's been very limited in what they would allow. The only other one I'm aware of is the Maumell Soccer Club. Their rings are similar to our rings, but it's basically in...
I might point out, they didn't ask permission. They asked forgiveness.
But that's the only one I'm aware of. And whether it would open up more requests, I couldn't answer that question. It could.
All right, thank you.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a question. It's Gavin, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Gavin. Just as a matter of information, how do you, how are you going to use this totem or amulet? Are you going to pass these out at conventions? Or what are you going to do with it?
Actually, we've got, what we plan doing is, as filed with the picture provided, we're going to pass it out to the individual patrols for their personal use. And basically, the beads will call all the scouts, will basically help the scout leaders with keeping track with all the scouts' records in case the actual records on the, on the computers, for some reason, gets lost or deleted where they can no longer be recoverable. Basically, the totem itself will act as like a secondary backup file.
I don't, maybe I don't understand. I don't see that much information here.
It appears to be used for identification.
Okay.
For personal use.
Okay.
Within the organization.
But it will be distributed to other Boy Scout troops? And...
No.
No?
No, just specifically this troop, Troop 295.
Only for your troop?
Right.
Okay. Okay, that's all I had. I was just curious. Thank you.
Alderman Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I had the same question Alderman Saunders had. But, thank you. But one question I have for Madam City Attorney. So we do this under resolution? We don't do this under an ordinance, right?
No, not by ordinance.
Now, can we spell out in the resolution that it will be specifically on this? And it'll be rendered by hand drawing or whatever we want?
Certainly. Certainly.
Because the important part, I think we need to guard our city icon as well. But if we allow it to be used in this case, I want to be able to rescind it.
Well, I think that's, that's perfectly fine. I think, you know, the idea of coming back with a resolution will allow it to be specifically identified in whatever way you want it to be identified, whether it's by hand drawing or to, you know, substantially comply with the drawing as attached. We, you know, we can certainly identify it that way. You know, I think the city council has been very clear that these, the rings shouldn't ever be used as, you know, for profit, for-profit organization. But, you know, the goal of trademarking is so that you protect the icon and that it continues to mean what you intend for it to mean. And so the use by a community group or a nonprofit group that really operates within the city doesn't water the trademark down. It probably actually helps it.
Which is what I was going to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
Alderman Anderson?
Thank you, Mayor. That's basically kind of, she said it more eloquently than I would have. But I just wanted to make sure that we do understand this is for Troop 295, and we're not giving it to the Boy Scouts of America, per se. We're giving it to 295, who's going to be here in the city. They are, are citizens of the city. And that, that icon does belong to them as well as it does to us. And I think it's great that we have a way for them to identify themselves at the city level. And what I would, you know, want to make sure is that we just have it for the use of the amulet only, of course, which we'll cover that in resolution. But I totally, it's a no-brainer for me. I think this is exactly what we would want that icon to be used as. So I would definitely be in the affirmative on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Norris?
Gavin, are these handmade? I know the one in the photograph is. But when, the official one, is it handmade?
Um, yes. They will be handmade.
Well, I just wanted to chime in. I'm very much in favor of this and honored that the troop would want to be sort of representing the city of Maumell. So thank you for that. And hopefully, we'll get a resolution together and see what we can do.
Alderman Johnson?
Very simply, I feel very complimented as he's pointed out that you would even approach us. And then I got a challenge to the council. I think we ought to promote the emblems more and more and more every way we can, even to entrances and everything else. I think they're significant to Maumell. They mean a lot. And apparently, y'all do feel that's important, too. But thank you very much for giving us consideration with the emblems, because I think they're great. The only ones, I remember we had to tear them was because of the Highway Department. And I wish we could put them back up.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you again, Mayor. I want to first say that I am very much for the Boy Scouts, and I recognize your merit badges and what you do. And I compliment you on that. I was a Boy Scout, too. And I certainly support Boy Scouts. But I don't want us to get caught up in an emotional thing here. I will give you an example. The Maumell Players is a nonprofit organization here in Maumell that represents Maumell. They're called the Maumell Players. So shouldn't they also carry the emblem? Are we going to allow that? Okay? How about the Lions Club? Maumell Lions Club. Are we going to allow that? Maybe this is a turning point if we start down this road. Okay? I'm not saying we should or shouldn't do this particular thing, but I think these are things we better think about right now. Because they're certainly going to start coming to us if they're smart. That's one reason we protected that emblem. We guarded it closely. So that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion on the floor to place this item on the agenda for the May 19th meeting. And as I understand, it will be in the form of resolution? Is that correct, Madam City Attorney? I have a second also already. So is there any more discussion on that motion? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Item will be on the agenda at the next month's meeting, or next times meeting, which is May the 19th, Gavin. So we look forward to you coming back to watch that meeting also.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Gavin ought to get a merit badge for standing up there.
And coming back on the 19th.
Just holding up all those merits.
That's right. Do good. Do real good, Gavin.
All right. Like I say, I've got three more public comment cards, but we'll hold those until we get to those items on the agenda. The next item is the financial statement review, and that will be done at the next meeting. Procedural motion, I need a motion from the floor to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only.
Move.
Have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. First item under unfinished business is third reading of ordinance number 848, accepting dedication of streets and drainage. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance to the city council, the City of Maumell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 848, an ordinance accepting and confirming the dedication of certain streets, drainage in phase five through eight of O S H Hills in Maumell, Arkansas, upon the fulfillment of certain contingencies and for other purposes.
Move, approve ordinance 848.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number 848. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all of them, or I'm sorry. Mr. Clerk, roll call vote.
Alderman Hoag?
Yes.
Alderman Norris?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes.
Alderman Lewis?
Yes.
Alderman Anderson?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Saunders?
Yes.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes.
Motion passes. Next item is the second reading of ordinance number 849, amending the zoning regulations. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
An ordinance to the city council, the City of Maumell County, Pulaski, State of Arkansas, of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 849, an ordinance amending the zoning regulations to establish car wash as a conditional use in a commercial zone and a permitted use in other commercial zones in the City of Maumell and for other purposes.
There's no action required on that, so that item will be on third reading at the next meeting. Next item is new business. First item under new business is the Civil Service Commission appointments. We have three applicants for that position. We appreciate all them attending, I think, tonight, and I think they're all here, I believe. And so, at this time, what we would like is for, to make it fair to all the people that have applied. We'd ask that you go to the blue room while we do interviews, while the council asks you questions, and then we will call you back in one at a time. Mr. Harrison can stay in the room, but Mrs., I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is it really Michael, or is it Michelle?
He is Michael.
Wow, okay. All right. I am sorry. So Ms. Harrison can stay in the room, and Mr. Ortega, who is also Michael, can leave the room, and Ms. Scott can leave the room, so. And they probably know their way, Jack, but Jack will escort you to the blue room. Alderman Lewis?
We have one question. The term in which we are reviewing this evening, was that a full term, or was it a partial that Mr. Ortega served out?
It was a partial that he served out.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know the exact
That's fine.
... term of that, but it was a partial.
Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Harrison, if you would like to just tell, everybody's got your resume or letter that you turned in, but if you'd like to just tell council a little bit about yourself, and then they'll probably ask you some questions.
Sure. My name's Michael Harrison. I live at 102 South Shore Drive here in Maumell, and have for eight years on July 28th with my husband Dan and our seven-and-a-half-year-old son Cole. I'm an attorney, practicing Litterock with Watts, Donovan, and Tilly. I've been there going on 13 years, been practicing around 16 years, native of Arkansas, from Helena, attended the University of Arkansas in Fayetteville, and then law school here in Litterock. Just want to help serve the community. I've never been a public servant, never run for public office, think there is merit in doing so and serving in the community. We intend to stay here in Maumell, we enjoy it. Son plays soccer, and baseball, and basketball, and golf, and taekwondo. I think that's all, here in Maumell, so have gotten to know a lot of the citizens, families, like the folks I've met, want to meet more. That's about all I can say. Be glad to answer any questions. Now, please be sure and get my good side.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. And I will be asking everyone these two questions.
Sure.
First of all, have you attended Civil Service Commission meetings here in Maumell? And if so, how many?
I have not. I have attended one in Litterock before I actually represented a gentleman in front of it. And I realize it was a matter of public record, but for attorney-client privileges, would prefer not to discuss it. But did attend it and speak at it on his behalf.
Okay, good answer. My second one was, any other?
Well, just that one in Litterock.
So you beat me to it. Good attorney. My final question is, is do you see, can you give us a feel for any special qualifications that you would bring to the commission?
Well, as an attorney, I am used to listening to complaints, both from citizens, citizens, laypersons, and attorneys, used to dealing with complex legal issues, used to reading a lot of documentation, drafting contracts, editing contracts, looking at them to determine if they meet the criteria and specifications that the clients need, as well as city codes and ordinances, state legislature statutes, et cetera. I'm attentive to detail, used to working long hours, not gonna bother me.
Good answers.
Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
There any other questions? Alderman Mosley?
Yes, have you had a chance to visit with any of the current commissioners? And how many are there? Are there?
There's five, total.
I have not. I didn't know if that would be appropriate or not. Mr. Clausen, the city clerk, advised me that the gentleman who was a part of it last year was rerunning, and so I didn't want to step on any toes.
All right, all right, thank you.
Alderman Lewis?
How did you learn of this vacancy?
Actually, I was looking on the city's website for a vacant position that I might could run for, because again, I wanted to serve. It wasn't necessarily the Civil Service Commission that I was looking for, but once I saw it, I thought that'd be a good fit, a good way to get my toe in the door and help the community.
You married a Canadian?
I did.
Have you assimilated him appropriately?
You know, I've tried. I jokingly say that I'm gonna write a book one day entitled "You Can't Make This You-Know-What-Up: My Life with Canadians." My in-laws have been here for the past week. I'm trying to get my son back into, this is what we do in the South. It's taking a little while.
Thank you, Mrs. Harrison. I appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, and you can remain in the room since
Okay, thank you all.
You won't be answering any more questions.
I'm like a witness.
I'm released, but I can remain.
Yeah.
There you go.
Mr. Ortega, Jack?
She's pretty good. I'm sorry, please.
Trying to disarm me again?
No. I'm waiting to catch the ball, you got it. One lady's done listening to anyone else in this room. Elevator music.
Yeah.
The council has a copy of your letter that you submitted. If you want to just tell the council a little bit about yourself, then they'll probably have some questions for you.
Okay. I live at 131 Nemours Court. I've been a resident of Maumell for a little over four years, four and a half years. And I'm retired from federal law enforcement. I had 35 years of government service. And I've been on the Civil Service Commission here for about a year and a half now. I had stepped in and served as an interim commissioner while Commissioner Steven Schroyer had to bow out because of his health.
Okay. There any questions for Mr. Ortega? Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Ortega, I was here when you came in for Mr. Schroyer. Glad to see you back. The questions that I have for you are a little ridiculous, considering that you've already sat in a seat, but keeping with my own personal brand of ethics, I feel like whatever I ask one, I should ask all.
Okay.
Okay. First of all, the number of meetings that you have attended for Maumell City Council, Civil Service Commission meetings?
Civil Service.
Well, I've attended every Civil Service meeting since I was installed. And I've been to a number of the city council meetings in between then too.
I know you have. And of course, the second part of that would be, have you, and this was really designed more for a person than that has not actually sat on that commission, but Civil Service Commission meetings elsewhere?
I'm sorry.
Have you attended Civil Service Commission meetings elsewhere?
In other jurisdictions, no.
Okay. My final question is, what special qualifications do you bring to the board?
Okay. Having been with the federal government for 35, you know, years, I think I have a good working knowledge of civil service and how it works. I feel that I can be a viable person when matters come up, to figure out whether or not the person has a just cause for what, you know, what they're claiming, or making sure that everybody's got the equal protection.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Saunders. Alderman Mosley?
Well, I'd ask the previous candidate if they had visited with people on the commission, or on the Civil Service Commission prior to coming in tonight, and the answer is yes on that, I would
Yes.
And also, I didn't see a resume on you in here. Is it, was it, did I miss it?
It's just a letter.
Okay, it's a letter. Can I ask you what branch of federal law enforcement you were in?
I was with the Department of Justice. Specifically, I was a criminal investigator for the United States Marshals.
All right. Okay. How long have you lived in Maumell?
About four and a half years.
All right. I think that's all I've got.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Ortega? Okay, thank you. You can remain in the room, Mr. Ortega.
Hello.
We've got a copy of your letter and your resume, but if you want to, in just your own words, tell the council a little bit about yourself, and then they'll have some questions for you.
Okay. You need my name and address?
That's fine.
Mary Scott, 12 Spring Drive. I was with the telephone company for 25 years. Twenty of those years I was in management, and I progressed up through the ranks, ending as the Vice President of Operations for the eighth-largest telephone company in the United States. At one time, I had 1,746 employees in my reporting structure. I have worked with both represented and non-represented employees, and I have personally negotiated contracts with both Teamsters and IBEW, keeping in mind, of course, the needs of the company and the needs and desires of the employees. So I always try to be fair and balanced in my dealings with those negotiations, and I always felt that they came out, of course, successfully, because both sides approved. I wanted to, I served on a lot of different, within a lot of different functions here in the city, and I was kind of wanting to do something that was a little more in line with my background and education. And this commission appointment came up, and I thought it would be a really wonderful opportunity. With that being said, I did not realize that there was an incumbent. And my applying has nothing to do with my feelings about Mr. Ortega. In fact, I think he's probably done a wonderful job. He stepped in when Mr. Schroyer had to step down. He's melded well with the team. They have been busy and successful, probably busier than they've ever been these last couple of years, and done some marathon sessions, from what I understand. He's done a really wonderful job. So if you do not consider me for the position this time, keep me in mind for something in the future. Been here, done that, got the T-shirt, next time. So, thank you. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Ms. Scott, I know you so well. I'm going to ask the same questions of you that I ask everybody else. You know my procedure.
I do.
Okay. Fairness and equity. First, about how many meetings have you attended at the Maumell Civil Service Commission?
Two. I went to one fairly early after I came to the city, and then I went to one a while later after Billy and I started doing meetings for MCA. It was before Billy was on the commission, because I wanted to see, get a better idea of what it was they did, and whether or not minutes for those meetings would be conducive for MCA, and I decided that they were not. So I did see the procedure that they went through at the meeting, and there wasn't an awful lot going on at that particular meeting, but yes, I have been there.
Have you attended other Civil Service Commission meetings in other locales?
No.
Okay. My final question, what special qualifications do you feel like you'd bring to the board, to commission?
Well, I have really a pretty extensive human resource background. Like I said, the negotiations that I've done with the bargaining units, the number of employees, and in our structure, the top person in each organization, HR always came to them before decisions were made about significant employee issues. Now, we didn't handle the, you know, these, been tardy six times, but if it got to the point where someone was going to be disciplined, generally, those kinds of things in my structure came to me through the HR group, and we discussed them. I always knew what was going on. I had the ability to offer input, negotiate compromises, those kinds of things. So I just have a pretty extensive background in that kind of thing. And I'm a pretty good writer, so I'm good at putting together technical documents, and I've written job descriptions. I have helped to establish the criteria for jobs and the wage structures for jobs as part of my background. So I thought I could bring that to the table.
Good answers. Thank you.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes, the same question I'd asked the other two. I want to know if, have you consulted with any of the people that are currently on the commission as to, to ask questions and basically just, I guess, familiarize yourself more with the
I did talk to one person and just said that I was going to apply for the position, and he gave me just a little bit of information about some of the things that they have done in the past, but I didn't grill him or anything, no.
All right. Thank you.
Alderman Lewis?
Mrs. Scott, I mean this question with no negativity whatsoever, but I must admit to being a little surprised, because, and I say this as a compliment, this is sort of like bringing Ted Williams off the bench here. And you've been one of our brightest stars in this community. The level of service that you've provided is second to none. And I was just curious as to the timing, is why now?
Well, I've been on a lot of other committees. You know, I applied for the Planning Commission.
I didn't, I wasn't aware of that.
And I was unsuccessful
Okay.
... at that. And so I went on the tree board instead. And then I was on the Steering Committee for the White Oak Bayou, and that's kind of tapered down over time, so that's not a timing issue anymore. And I just like to be involved in the city, and this sounded meaningful to me.
Excellent.
But Mr. Ortega is a wonderful man, and he's done a wonderful job, so my feelings won't be hurt, just so you know that.
Alderman Johnson?
One quick question. Have you ever thought about running for Alderman?
It has crossed my mind a time or two.
Alderman Mosley?
Well, maybe I'm jumping again here, but I was just gonna say, this is a really tough decision tonight. There's three great people here, and I want all of you to run for office. You know, that's the healthy way of doing things. Run for office, keep putting your name in for these things, get on the Planning Commission, whatever. You know, just keep after it, and don't take no for an answer. Go ahead and keep going. That's the way things are healthy around here. Thank you.
Okay. There's no more questions. You can take your seat, Ms. Scott. Okay, the city clerk has prepared ballots. You do need to check a box for the person that you want, and then you need to sign your name legibly, please.
There's you one. There's me one.
We do appreciate everybody that did apply, and they can only select one person, and so the other two individuals that are not selected, we do. There will be more appointments coming up. We have appointments every year, so. Ms. Mary Scott was selected to serve as the Civil Service Commissioner in this case, so. I'd like to say, we do appreciate everybody that submitted their names on this item. Next item is the Academics Plus Charter School Board appointment, so we'll be going through exactly the same format. In order to do that, we have two applicants for that school board, and is Dr. Eaton here? Okay.
Paging Dr. Eaton.
I guess if Dr. Eaton is not here, we only have one applicant here then, and that will be Mr. Keith Robinson. You have a resume by Dr. Eaton in your packet, and so you can look over that, but at this time, I'd ask Mr. Robinson to come forward. And Mr. Robinson, if you'd just tell us a little bit about yourself. We've got a copy of your resume, but then in your own words, tell the council a little bit about yourself, and then they'll have some questions for you.
Okay. Keith Robinson, 129 Maumell Valley Drive. And six years ago, Ms. Mary Payton decided she was not going to run again for the school board, so I got involved. We've been here for nine years, and out of those nine years, eight of those, I've been involved in the charter school. My kids have progressed all the way through, from elementary school all the way through high school. One actually graduated. And of the eight years, six years I've spent on the school board. Had a great time. I can now tell you firsthand that Rob and his leadership at the school have made a tremendous difference in what we're doing there. So I'm asking for your consideration as we move forward. We've got some, another project that we're gonna build, and I've got one more daughter who's going to be a senior next year. And one of the benefits that we have as, not only giving back, but one of the greatest benefits we have is, as a member of the board for the school, we get to hand our child their diploma. So it's been a great thing to be involved in that. It's been great to see the school progress, and it's been great to see the support that the City of Maumell has given to that school. And to look and see now the test results that we're getting, and the accolades that we're getting at the school, and you think back, Mary, of where we were before, it's completely different. So I thank you for your consideration, and I appreciate this. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Robinson?
I confirm all the things that he said, said about it charter school. They've come a long ways, and Mary was one of the first ones ever to be on there.
Yes, she was.
And it's amazing. I work with them, and it's just amazing, and the kids are just great, and I enjoy being part of it.
Okay. If there's not any other questions, you can take your seat, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you.
And we'll take another vote. Please check one box of the two that are there, and then write your name legibly, please.
Ledger. One for you, one for Jan, and one for me.
It's hard for me to do, so I understand.
And it's not necessary for you fold them, we're just gonna unfold them.
I'll fold them right away. Oh, you don't want us to see?
You turn it over.
Mr. Robinson, you have been reappointed to the Academics Plus Charter School Board as the council's representative. Thank you for your service. All right. The next item is Resolution Number 2014-18. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Yeah, let me catch up.
Sorry.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Pulaski County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2014-18, a resolution to approve the disposal of the city's surplus property.
Okay, this is a resolution to allow the city to get rid of the street sweeper that we have replaced with a new street sweeper. You should have seen it out on, the new one out on the city's streets. Alderman Lewis?
I did see that street sweeper the other day, and I was just gonna say, I like that street sweeper. It really looks sharp. To that end, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 20- Resolution 2014-18.
Second.
A motion, second, that the council approved Resolution Number 2014-18. Is there any discussion on that motion? Alderman Mosley?
Just one question here. Somewhere here, I saw where the old one still may have a value of $30,000 or something like that.
That's what we're hoping, yes, sir.
That's what we're hoping. What, once it's sold at auction or however it's sold, how does the money, where's the money come back in? How's it accounted for?
Goes into the general fund.
General fund, under, you remember what line item it was?
It does not go into a line item. It goes just into the general fund.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
It would, I mean, there, I can't tell you what item. I mean, I'm sure there's a line item down there, been the journal entry where it basically will say proceeds, you know, but I don't know exactly which line item that would be. I can find that out for you. Ms. Thompson was out today, but I can find that out.
Close it up. Thank you very much.
Yeah. And we will, you know, it will be bid out, so the, and that's the estimate that the people that sell these type of devices told us, so, yeah. There's no other discussion on Resolution Number 2014-18. All those in favor of approving, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution Number 2014-19. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaske County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2014-19, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
Okay. This is for four police cars. They're listed on your resolution. They range everywhere from a 2002 to a 2010 vehicle. Alderman Hoag?
How do we determine which ones we're going to replace? Is it by mileage?
It's by mileage, yes, ma'am. And the amount of repairs that we were doing on those cars, because sometimes mileage is not a real good indicator of police cars, because they, they spend a lot of hours sometimes eiling, especially if they're a K-9 vehicle or something like that. So, if you go by hours, you're changing the oil every week on one, just about, since they do a lot of, at traffic accidents and things like that, running their emergency lights and everything, they have to leave them running.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2014-19.
Second.
A motion, second, that the council approved Resolution Number 2014-19. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor of approving, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is Resolution Number 2014-20, amending the 2014 general fund budget. Mr. Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, Plaske County, Arkansas, Resolution Number 2014-20, a resolution to amend the 2014 general fund budget.
This is a budget resolution to pay for the survey that we just sent out for the bond surveys, bond project surveys. Alderman Lewis?
Couple of items. Number one, just want to compliment you, Mr. Mayor, and perhaps City Clerk Clausen had a role in this, but I understand you gentlemen went out and shopped a bulk mailing service and got a better rate than probably we initially intended, so my compliments to you both.
Thank you. Yeah, Ms. Courtney Dunn.
Ah-ha, the real brains behind the operation.
Did all the shopping for us and secured that and got it worked out for us, and was very instrumental in getting it out. And then, she is, she is keying them in as we get them in mailed back to us right now also. So, she's heavily involved in that survey.
Well, the second thing I wanted to add was, I believe we did the right thing absolutely in getting the survey out in a very expeditious fashion, but I just wanted to add one thing into kind of consideration going forward, and that's that Jake Sandlin, who is our Democrat Gazette reporter for city council meetings, had come with an idea recently, and he said, well, why don't you include that survey in with your city billing for services, for sanitation and whatnot? We only bill on a quarterly basis. We had already billed and sent that bill out, so that train, in a sense, had already left the station. And so, I told him about that, and he said, well, he said, what about the water bill? And I said, hmm, I don't know about that. Now, there would have been some logistical challenges as to the send back of making sure people didn't send their water payment up here to City Hall, and if they got the survey up here. But nevertheless, I just wanted to note that I put a phone call in to Tina Richardson over at Maumell Water Management, inquiring about that possibility, and they were very receptive to us doing that for purposes of helping us save money and communicate with the residents. So, I think that degree of cooperation should be noted, and perhaps in the future, we can consider such a solution to save money.
Good.
Thank you.
I agree. The, the printing was part of that, and envelopes were part of that, but the postage would also probably went up for them, because it could have raised the weight too, possibly. So, I don't know if that would have occurred, but it would have been a cost savings involved, yes, sir.
Absolutely. So, to that end, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 2014-20.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution 2014-20. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is land purchase for fire station number two, and it says, a resolution will be presented if negotiations permit. We don't have a signed offer to do that, so we did not do a resolution. I will pass out just a little bit of history on the negotiation process, and Mr. Mark Bingham is here tonight to answer any questions. He represents the sellers that we have been looking at, basically, or for the property that we've been looking at. The, the history on the fire station, the first offer was made on the fire station land on April the 21st, and I offered them to purchase Lot 4, and if you'll turn to the second page of the handout right there, you can see that it's, this piece of property is broken down into four lots, and these are not platted. They're preliminary, or this is just a sketch, so these are not true lots necessarily, but they could be done in this fashion. So, we made an offer on Lot 4 as it was depicted on this drawing on page two at $250 per square foot. We also agreed that we would not pay more than the appraised value on the property, and we would build the roadway at that facility at an estimated cost of $218,000. The seller would provide the land for the roadway at no charge to the city. We would also get an option on Lot 2 and 3 at $3 per square foot in return for construction of the roadway and a right of first refusal on Lot 1, basically trying to tie up most of the lots with an option, and then the remainder on a right of first refusal. The sellers countered back to the City of Maumell that they would sell the Lot 4 for $325 per square foot. We would, we would build the roadway. The seller would still provide the land at no charge. They would give us no options on Lot 2 and 3, and the seller is willing to give a right of first refusal to any remaining acreage of an acceptable offer from another buyer with no more than two weeks' time period for a response from the city. They also requested that the city to assist the seller in changing the current zoning of C2 to C3 at no expense to the seller prior to the closing on Lot 4. That last item was a pretty significant issue. I couldn't support that. It's basically what you call spot zoning. Basically, the entire corridor along Club Manor between Odom South and Millwood is either C2 or PCD. And so, you would have allowed a C3 use in a real small area on 1.2 acres, basically, and it would have been directly across from some homes. C3 is not a bad zoning. It's just that it allows for open displays, so a car lot could go there, or a lumber store could go there. So, so that was a concern of mine. And so, we worked with the sellers on that, and they, they were willing to basically allow us to come back without requesting that. But then, the current offer that's submitted to the sellers right now is the 1.3, Lot 4, basically at $3 per square foot. We would still build the roadway, and the seller would still not provide a land, a charge for the land under the roadway. The other option that could be considered is to purchase the entire 6.4 acres at the listed price, which is being offered at $350 per square foot. The reason that they would give us even a reduction on Lot 4 is because we're building the roadway. And so, that's the, where we're at right now. We do not have an offer to bring before the council currently, so I don't have a resolution or anything. Just want to bring you back up on the history of where we're at, just for your, the understanding of where we're going with this. If you'll flip on to page three and four, there's a couple of layouts where the fire station will fit on that Lot 4. I don't like the third one in the little curvy drive that it has there, but I do like the layout of the building better in that instance, because the fire trucks are going out at 90 degrees to Club Manor instead of at a, where they have to pull out and then curve to hit the Club Manor. So, that, that layout would be changed a little bit. They were trying to get as much parking on there as they could. If you'll go on to, keep going through there, you'll see a track, a total track, which is 6.04 acres, and it's listed as Track D2. Then, if you go to the next page, I did have Kraft and Toll, who's also doing the fire station, they did some quick sketches up to see if the, how the fire station would work, if the possibility of doing the City Hall Senior Center Events, Event Center complex that had proposed by Alderman Lewis. If that was done, they have a sketch of how that could all work together. And then, the last page is just a blow up of it so that you can see it in a little better detail. But that's where we stand right now. We could, no action is required, because I don't have a, either an accepted offer, they haven't accepted our offer currently, so there's really no action that the city needs to take on that. There is a type on that page, by the way, too, and it's just that I gave you on the very front page. It's just I added a zero for some reason in front of the second line under the current offer, right there. But, so what possibly we might do is, we might have a special council meeting, if we can have one, once we get either a counter offer to our current offer, or a signed offer that they've accepted. I will still need the council's approval on that. If there are any questions? Alderman Lewis?
Tending to the maps, and thank you for visiting with Kraft and Toll regarding possible multi-use complex. Those little numerals that are on there, are those representative of a number of parking spaces?
That is correct.
Okay. Did they give a sense as to whether there was adequate amount of parking?
Well, there is more than adequate per our requirements in the planning code. There's only about, you know, I think we're lacking in that. I think we need to look at that, but I think we're only required about a half, 120 spaces in that building, the way it's currently configured. There's actually 261 spaces, as it's shown on this map right here. So, and that was, I told them to shoot for two, at least 250 spaces, because I think it's going to require that if you built the facility and then you had either multiple events, or you had a large event at the facility, because you don't want cars parking on Club Manor. They could park on the little street going in there, but I do think it's a, it's a concern if they start parking out on Club Manor.
You had also dispatched an email to me pertaining to the cost estimate of a building in, I believe it's Bossier City, perhaps somewhere in Louisiana.
That is, yes.
And cost-wise, it was somewhat of a promising looksee. Of course, they were building a much, I think it was grander building, were they not? But...
Well, I, I don't, I don't know about that. It could be, yes, yeah, yeah. But there's, I've also had, I've had a couple of people do estimates on this building, and it varies anywhere from $10 million to $13 million on that building in its current configuration. It's depending, there's a lot of issues that enter into it. It's commercial kitchens, and on the, on the third floor, if you have an event center, would it be a commercial kitchen, or would be what they call a warming kitchen, basically that a caterer can use, and they bring everything in already cooked, and they only have it as a warming area, basically, to keep things hot. They wouldn't actually prepare foods there. But there is some issues with elevators and life safety issues that the fire chief would have to be involved in. The more people you place on an upper floor, the more stairways that's required and all that. So, we haven't gotten into all the details right there, so that's why it's kind of a pretty large number of $10 to $13 million.
Tending to those kitchens, are we talking about for the senior wellness, or are we talking about for an event center?
Both.
Both.
Yes. The senior center has a commercial kitchen right now. They have to have one in order to serve the meals that they serve at lunch. So, there would definitely be, if the senior citizen went there, center went there, there would definitely be a commercial kitchen for them.
Okay.
What I was referring to was, on the third floor, it would be a cost of a commercial kitchen, or if it was only going to be catered, then it would be what they call a warming kitchen.
Okay. Okay.
Alderman Mosley?
Yes, I'm mainly trying to get a handle on how much more it would cost us to go ahead and put the fire station over there as opposed to the open space. And if I'm looking at it correctly, would it be about $400,000? It's the cost of the land plus the cost of the roadway?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I mean, it's rough numbers, yes. I mean, that's, yeah.
Unless you chose to purchase the entire?
Entirety. And I will say also, I talked to Mr. Bill Spivey also today regarding, could bond money be used to purchase land in this scenario if the council bought the entire six acres? And he said, what you would need to do is basically make sure that it's delineated, the land that's going to be used for the fire station. So, if it's 1.31 acres, then that amount in the square foot, and the offer's at $3 a square foot, you could put that money, you need to put a check, put it in escrow with the title company, so that it's very, very clearly marked, so that the source of funds can be proven where that's coming from, and then purchase the rest of the land with a separate check that would be out of the general fund, or wherever the council chose to take it out of, yes. Alderman Lewis?
For the street that would be constructed, though, we would pull that out of our street fund reserve, correct?
We could if we owned the entire property, yes. Now, there's a possibility, I don't know how it's going to work. I mean, I think we can still do that if they, if they donate the land to the City of Maumell, but it needs to be, we need to have that in our title before we spend street fund money on that. But I think that could work out.
Should that be part of our offer?
Uh, no, I don't, well, they, part of the offer is, they have to be involved in the plating process, and so, we'd have to plat it in order to even buy a part of the property. So, Lot 4 has to be platted out before we can purchase it.
Okay.
Okay? And so, then the road would have to be part of that, because basically, you're creating a lot that needs the access then, so.
So, just explore?
Yeah.
Worst-case scenario?
Worst-case scenario, yes.
They agree to the cost of Lot 3, and they, or 4, excuse me, thank you, and we start going into the plat negotiations, and then, whoa, all of a sudden, they have another idea. No, we'd rather do it this way. Where are we then?
Okay, I guess...
Well, I mean, you know, those, during the offer and acceptance, it'll be identified how the land will be handled, and that the, it'll be platted or not.
Okay.
So, that'll be handled before that. We should, I mean, that would lead to a whole different problem, not just a money problem.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Alderman Johnson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to compliment you on all the work that's been put into this, and looking at alternative ways of doing things. I know I'm speaking for the people in my ward, but by the same token, this is, you know, really exciting to think we might have something a little bit different, and go a little different way, and accomplish a lot of different things. So, hey, you've done a good job of trying to put something else together. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Bingham, do you have anything to add, or?
Yeah, the only thing I would say at this point is, you need to understand, you don't have, oh, sorry, you don't have the offer accepted because the owner has been in Houston for a medical condition. So, unfortunately, he didn't get back in time today to do that. I just text the representative, and they still don't have an answer. So, I am led to believe that your offer will be accepted. So, I think the question before you at this time is, is that what you want, or do you want to make an offer for all six acres? But I believe the offer on the table at this point is going to be acceptable.
Okay.
Questions?
Any questions?
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Bingham. All right. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't have a question from Mr. Bingham, but, you know, are you going to come back to us before you... you going to come back to us before you purchase the entire six acres, if that's...
Yes, sir.
I have a problem. Okay, okay. As long as you, as long as you do that, and I'm just going to throw one example of why I say this.
All right.
We need to think through this three-story complex. I congratulate you on your idea. I think it's a great idea. I've said this before. If it was in the middle of Track D and we owned all that, I think that would be super. I'd be all into it. I do have some problems with putting it in that location, and second, an event center on the top floor is probably doomed for failure. How are you going to back tractor-trailers in for equipment and stuff? I mean, you, you've got some logistic problems with an event center on the third floor. So, I just wanted to make sure before we start down that path and sign contracts that we talk.
Well, and, and I agree. Uh, we're a long ways from approving that. It would even take, uh, a vote of the people to approve that building to go there. We don't have the funds to construct that at this time, so that would take a vote of the people. The, uh, the one issue is, is it more fiscally responsible to go ahead and purchase the entire tract of land and then either hold it as an investment for what a future project could go there, or even sell it if an offer was made on the land, you know, after we've improved part of the land? So, and you might be able to sell three lots, just like it is, to other individuals. So, and you might, I'm not going to say you can, but you might recoup some of the costs that we've incurred buying some of the land and putting the roadway in, and you definitely could incur, you could recoup some of your cost, uh, for the roadway, even if you couldn't pay for the land that you purchased. But you could recoup some of that cost. Alderman Lewis?
Land is a sound investment. The, uh, chances of it declining in value, I would say, are very slim. Um, you know, there are plenty of ideas that I have, that I'd be honored to share with you sometime, if you'd like to visit with me, pertaining to Track D. But the challenge is, is that the purchase price for Track D, I think, would probably be a little bit over our heads in any scenario. And so, you know, you're talking about a piece of land that has incredible aesthetic value, being right there near the lake. Um, you know, are we going to be able to pull a, uh, have a tractor-trailer pull up there on the third floor? No. Um, but we, you know, certainly could have some events that would be, um, rather, um, opulent, I would say, in many ways, and, uh, perhaps even a chance to rent that space out. Um, and then, that is the only scenario which allows us to possibly, uh, vacate and sell two other additional properties, including the one we're sitting on right here. So, you have the chance there to, I think, take a part of that strategic plan and potentially give it a chance. If we pass, we pass. Maybe it's not in the financial cards right now. I'm not saying that it is. I am confident that the mayor is negotiating these things quite well, though. And furthermore to that end, if we pass on this, the opportunity may close its doors permanently. And my fear, and if you'd like to talk about Track D at some point, I've got another idea for it, but my fear about Track D is that at some point, uh, we may see the development of it just due to time, and those that have invested in it wish to finally make some sort of a move on it. And it would be a shame to see that development just be yet another series of strip malls. Now, are strip malls the worst thing out there? No, not, not at all. I mean, they have their place. But in terms of a center downtown Malmell, to me, this is your last-ditch effort, is going to be in this area. So, we have an opportunity to move on something that is adjacent, and then perhaps I can implement that other idea, or visit with you about it pertaining to Track D. And I think this is our chance. If we let it go by, it's gone forever. So, that's what I shall say.
Alderman Johnson?
Well, I certainly don't disagree with my fellow Alderman here on that, but I do believe, in the broad sense of everything, Malmell's future depends on Track D. What happens there, what goes on there, hey, it can change this city more ways than not. I mean, some good, some bad, but Track D is so important to us for the future, and I don't know, we, we can't just let anything come in there. We gotta make sure that Track D is somehow, it's, hey, I love the plans the mayor put together. I mean, it's great, and we're working in the right direction, but don't forget, Track D is the center of our city. Our city's future depends on what's at Track D, in my opinion.
Alderman Anderson?
Uh, I think I'm gonna, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I'm gonna have to say that, uh, I'm gonna agree with Alderman Lewis in that we need to seize this opportunity to, to, to kind of look towards the future and maybe implementing some of the things that we had in our strategic plan. And buying property doesn't mean that we're going to be totally focused on this particular plan, but it does give us options in the future. And I think that, I would think that this is going to be a more fiscally responsible way to, to look at it, instead of trying to piecemeal like that things have happened maybe in the past. That's just my opinion on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to ask Alderman Lewis to, to share, I, you know, maybe give us a little quick presentation, some meeting as to what some of your ideas are. I don't, I don't, I'm not real sure we can get together and talk about it anyway, uh, as far as, uh...
Well, we can invite-
But, uh, we can invite the, the press, I guess, but, so I, I would, if, if you can whip up a three, four-minute presentation, or five, whatever, sometime, just real quick, just kind of share what you had in mind.
Well, I can outline it to you, uh, in this way, and, you know, Freedom of Information Act laws being what they are, Arkansas has a strict interpretation of it. I don't see that as a pressing issue on our agenda. If you'd like to speak about it sometime, I'm available. But I will say that, um, Mr. Mayor can attest to this, that he and I had a conversation several months ago where I had an idea that perhaps we would put it as a bond project to purchase Track D. And Mr. Mayor was gracious enough to do a little bit of homework on that and define some prices, and it indeed is a very hearty, uh, grab to go after that much money, or to that much kind of property. And there were a couple other ideas that I had, but ostensibly right now, what I think could be a workable scenario is that we partner with the owner and then a retail development, uh, advisory company, which those are out there, to say, look, we want to build something on the line of a mini promenade kind of thing like you see in West Little Rock for the city of Malmell. We partner with the downtown organization that Arkansas has, that has worked in so many communities that we've heard about at the municipal league meetings pertaining to their downtown. I mean, everybody's wanting to update their downtown. Could we go to them and say, gee, could we have one? Because we're one of the few cities that doesn't have one. And so perhaps there are some opportunities there to explore. But with that joint partnership of the owner, joint partnership of a group that helps develop those kind of things, and then we as a city perhaps could have an opportunity to say, if you will grant us a series, it would be a broad one, of easements to where we could develop some roads going into this, and potentially a town center park, and this is the city's investment. We won't buy any land, but we will have an agreed-upon plan of action to how this land will be developed within a certain guideline. And that could be a really tricky thing legally to work out, but again, we're just sitting here in the, you know, idea phase. And so, I haven't brought this up, not to be cloak and dagger, but just to save us all time, but I think there's that opportunity there where we could build something at an investment which would be just for the improvements, and then what can we bring in here from retail-wise? I think the property owner would probably almost certainly go along with that, because you are taking their property and you are increasing the value of it tremendously. And on the downside, let's say, they don't go in for about three to four years. Well, in the meantime, you have one very nice park and some improvements for your residents to enjoy, which, by the way, would be adjacent to potentially a multi-use event center that the city has, your senior center, your event center, your city hall, and then our crown jewel, Lake Willistee. All of those things culminating for, I think, an experience that would take Malmell's internal enjoyment value, its, you know, essence, and really setting it ablaze. So, there you have it.
I like it. Great, great impromptu presentation.
Yeah, uh, and I agree with Alderman Johnson that that, I'd sure hate to see Track D get away from us. I did run into, I actually met Tommy Lassiter, who I guess, uh, has that land, and actually ran into him down at Two Rivers Park one day. We just started talking and discovered, you know, we had something in common, but, uh, uh, the way he's talking, I, I think we do need to stay in touch with him as much as possible. So, anyway, thank you.
Okay, before we get too far off track on Track D, uh, I'd like to bring this conversation back to the, the land that we're talking about. Uh, if, if there isn't, uh, if, if we do get an offer tomorrow or something like that, would the council be, uh, would they, would they consider having a special meeting so that we can get this taken care of and move forward with it, is my, is my question on that? And we're, we're somewhat limited, but we could possibly do it, uh, and I'm going to say Thursday night, uh, because just to make sure we get some notice and allow people to do it. There is a subcommittee Thursday night at five-thirty, but we could meet after that subcommittee, uh, for the planning commission, possibly, if that's available, or maybe even next Monday night or something like that. Uh, that's what I'm looking for. I know that Alderman Kelly travels a lot and he schedules- I'll be here. You'll be here?
Yeah, the civil service commission.
Either meeting. Oh, civil service commission meeting is Monday night. You're right. And I can be here all week this week. Okay, all right. But we, we could meet somewhere else if we needed to, yes.
Or, or earlier or-
Or earlier or something, or after or something like that, okay. All right, but it's not for definite, but I'm just trying to pick a couple of dates.
Subcommittee meets in Blue Room.
Subcommittee does. Civil Service Commission meets in here, though.
Yeah, but you were talking Thursday night?
Well, possibly Thursday night or Monday night is what I was, what, the two num, two nights I threw out there. Just trying to get a feel for the council if that was a possibility.
I would rather not see us go too late, like after their meeting.
Yeah.
You know, I work at night.
Okay.
Monday, there, there is a, a commission that meets in this chamber at six o'clock.
Can we do it in the Blue Room?
You can. I, it's gonna be, I'll just say, it'll be challenging for me to be at two places at one time.
No, I, we might have to do it at five-thirty or five or something like that if we did it on Monday night.
And that's fine. I can-
Yeah, but, well, if everybody else could make it. But, uh, all right, we'll, we'll, if that comes to fruition, I'll send out an email. Uh, and I heard several people, I mean, is there any consideration? Do, I mean, do we want them to accept this offer, or do we want to pursue the other alternative, with the entire six acres? I mean, I, I need to kind of know.
The six acres, I think we should really consider.
Okay.
Is that a motion?
I, I make a motion that we consider the six acres.
Second.
Well, a motion to consider the six acres. Are there any discussion on that, the entire six acres?
Uh, to buy?
No, sir, not to buy, but to, an offer, an op, an offer to buy, to offer to purchase, but it would still have to come back to the council for approval.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And how much-
We did.
How much do you estimate that would be?
It's the bottom line down there. At three fifty per square foot, it'd be nine hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, uh, a hundred and, uh, I don't even see, uh, somewhere around a hundred and eighty-five thousand that could come out of the bond proceeds.
That is the asking price, correct?
That's the asking price. That is correct. That is the asking price. That's all they've offered it at, right now.
To get the option, it's, it's-
Well, that's not an option. That's, that's, this, this is my terminology, other option. It's not an option. It's-
Oh, I see, I see.
Yeah. And other, basically, this is the top, so it's not an option on the property.
So, the question on the floor, the motion on the floor would be to make an offer-
To make an offer on the entire-
For the entire property.
Yeah.
If that, that offer was, uh, was, uh, accepted, then the council would have to approve the purchase.
Right. I guess I'd just lean toward just the, the one lot, whichever, whatever everybody else thinks.
All right. Alderman Hope?
If we bought the entire acreage, we wouldn't have the cost of the road, but we would have to build a road at some point, so we would have the cost.
We would still have the cost of the road. That doesn't take that out. But, but what it, it does is at least, once you build the road, the land it cost is probably going to go up for the remaining acreage.
Exactly. I personally am in favor of buying the entire tract.
I agree.
If we, if we decide we don't need it and want to sell it, I suspect it would sell.
Okay. And, and you will still get the vote on this. I'm just asking for some direction tonight, is what I'm trying to do on that, so...
But we hope it'll be less than three fifty.
We hope it'll be less than three fifty. That is correct. That is correct. I can't promise that, but-
I understand.
But I hope it's less than three fifty.
Mark did.
Okay. If there's no more discussion, the motion is to, uh, make an offer on the entire six point oh four acres. Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. We're now talking about buying the entire six acres, and it seems to me that one of the reasons is so that we can make an investment in land for the future, okay? First of all, this land has been sitting vacant and for sale for a long time, okay? Second, we're upping the price of the land because, and, and I will explain what the mayor has already said, but I want to make sure it's real clear. Pick a number, three dollars a square foot. We pay three dollars a square foot for it. It's not selling at that right now, whatever this number is. We put the road in, we spent more money on it. We've also lost that amount of land. That ups the price of the remaining lots. The remaining lots have not sold already, and now we're hoping in the future they're going to sell. Okay? That's pretty speculative stuff. I don't think I can agree with that. I don't have a crystal ball like that. Anyway.
Okay. Well, and it's, it's not necessarily buying it as an investment to sell. I mean, it may be used as a city purpose.
Yeah, there you go.
Maybe, maybe.
And it's also not platted. I want to be clear that there's, it's not necessarily one lot, two lot, three lots, or four lots. It's not been platted, so the council would have complete discretion in how to pursue that.
Alderman Lewis?
Remember, there is a very big difference between upping the price and upping the value. I mean, is that just a semantical term? You just applied price rather than value?
We can play semantics, but the trouble is, when we go out to sell it, we're going to have to sell it at a higher price.
If we want to sell it.
And it doesn't sell at the current price. It's been sitting there vacant for a long time. It's not selling at the current price, but we're going to have to up the price on that because we've spent additional monies on it. Plus, we're trying to get someone to buy it now next to a fire station, which is why we're moving there in the first place.
Well, I don't think that there's any requirement, Mr. Mayor, that we have to up the price. The market is what it is, and so you have thereby made the property more marketable, because, uh, let's say, business owner wants to come in and he wants to put an office park in there, he or she does not have to build a road now. We have done that part for them, and so thereby their investment is less, potentially allowing them to spend more on what is now a more viable and valuable piece of land. Is it somewhat speculative? Perhaps it is. But again, I remind you, once this dork of opportunity closes, it perhaps closes for good.
We have our fire station. That was the issue here.
Alderman Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I gotta, I gotta agree with Alderman Saunders here. I, you know, we came in to solve a problem here for the fire station, and I, we've kind of, we're kind of roaming, roaming down the road on something we really, I mean, it's just suddenly here. So, uh, I think we ought to just solve one problem at a time here and just, just take care of the fire station. I'd, I'd like to see the fire station give there. I think that's a good place for it. And, um, but I have the same concerns that Alderman Sanders, I think, has. Thank you.
Alderman Norris?
Uh, I'm just trying to think of this. Uh, what use would the property have to the city if we don't do the, the-
Fire station.
The fire station, yes, but if we don't do the city hall slash senior citizen center slash event center? Because I, I'm not a big fan of that. Well, I think it's creative idea. I just don't know that those three uses are the type that I would normally try to group together if it wasn't for the proposals that were already here. So, I'm just curious what other uses could we foresee for that land?
Well, you could put a senior citizen center there in and of itself on one of the lots. That's one of the proposals that's before the bond-
Yes.
-task force. So, that, that, that's a possibility. The other is, you could put city hall as a standalone building there. You could, you could put the courts there. You could put an event center there on land that you already own. I mean, not saying they're all one use, but with, on, you could put one on each three lots, maybe. If you had four lots there, you could have three different separate buildings there. I, and I don't know, there may be, you could put a, you could put an indoor pool there. I mean, that's not what we want to do, because it needs to be, that the community center. I'm just saying, there's, there's all kinds of things that you could place there, possibly.
Because of the zoning, there's very little the city couldn't do there. I, I can't think of a governmental purpose that couldn't be served there.
Yeah. Airport.
Well, an airport, probably. You're right. It could not. Yeah, unless the size, you know, wouldn't allow it.
One of them.
Right, sure.
Airport one day. Okay, that answers my question. And I, I, hearing that makes me feel better that by making an offer on, on the bigger- Okay, that answers my question. And I, I, hearing that makes me feel better that by making an offer on, on the bigger lot, we're not necessarily entering into that situation where we're trying to flip it for money in the future, or necessarily entering into some sort of preemptive agreement for that triplex.
No.
So, I'm, I'd be interested in seeing, making an offer on the full piece of land. I'm not sold on the idea yet, but.
And I'm not asking you to be.
I think it's worth.
Give an option.
Did you have something, Mr.?
I will whatever it is.
Alright, okay. Alderman Mosley.
Where would the money come from if we bought the entire thing there? Would it just come out of reserves?
You would, yeah, the council would have to take it out of reserves, yes.
Okay.
Not, it would, less the fire station land, yes.
Less the approximate.
The approximate cost of the fire station, yes.
And, and in that circumstance, if the city purchased the whole parcel, then certainly the street could be paid out of street funds. The, I mean, there's no question about it. The city owns the whole parcel.
Alright. Do you have an opinion you'd like to express which, which way to go and why?
Well, here, and I don't have a crystal ball either, but the land will never be cheaper than it is currently. I'm, I'm, I mean, Alderman Saunders is correct. It's, it could be an investment, but it'll never be cheaper. This is the cheapest, this is the least expensive land that I've found in researching all around Malmell for this, so it will not be any less expensive a year from now, two years from now. I think that part of the reason it didn't sell is because of the economy for the last four or five years. Also, I think it was because they were trying to sell six acres, not 1.5 or 1.4. We, we actually, the land has gone down in value. There's no doubt. We had an offer in 2008, it was $5 a square foot. It has now gone down to 350 a square foot. It's still more than they paid for the land. That value is still more than they paid for the land. So, that's my opinion. I, I'm gonna say that, is it'll never be less expensive in the future. Now, do, do I think we're gonna be able to put a complex on that remaining property? Not for several years. You know, unless a bond issue goes through and then for one of the issues and, and a site works there, you know, but I think that's gonna take a lot of cards to fall in place for that to happen. So I'm not gonna say within five years, you have a facility on the rest, a city facility on the rest of that land. I do think that there's possibilities, and I tried every way to make it work to retain Lot 1, 'cause I think Lot 1 will be a valuable commercial piece of property in the future. Lot 1 is on the corner lot of Odom South and Club Manor. That lot will be more valuable in the future after road is there, and it has slight view from the Boulevard. I won't say it's frontage on the Boulevard, but you can see it if they've got a big enough sign. So that, that's where I think now, you know, I, I, I originally had said I only wanted to do the Lot 4. I mean, that was all I was after. I, it's kinda the same comment you just made that, you know, let's take care of the fire station. But then the more I've thought about it and the more I've lived with this piece of property for the last month, seems like, that I've kinda changed my mind. Yeah, I flipped a little bit, I guess. 'Cause I only wanted Lot 4 originally, and there, you know, that's all I wanted to buy. I didn't wanna go any further than that, 'cause I didn't wanna have to worry about the rest of it, but that's where I am currently.
Alright, thanks.
Alderman Lewis.
Three points, and I know we're keeping this audience rather long, but I feel like we do have a productive discussion going on here. First of all, if you have an offer that is agreed upon for the entire six acres, and you bring that to the council, we can reject it and still go back to Plan A, if you wanna call it that, which is to buy Lot 3, 4, I'm sorry, I am not referring to my map as I go, Lot 4.
Yes.
So, that option still goes back to this body, correct?
Correct.
Now, Mr. Mayor, one question is, you know, do we run a certain risk there of spoiling another deal, or is that a question you can answer? That's tough.
I, I don't think it spoils, I really don't. It's, you know, we, we have talked and asked, I mean, it's, the consideration's been made, and I, you know, Mr. Bingham and I have talked, and, you know, it's, you know, what about the whole thing, you know? And right now, the best that they're saying is at 350 a square foot, but if an offer was put forth, then there might be.
Talk is talk.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not gonna say that, that they would commit to anything less than that. They haven't committed to anything less than that. Mr. Bingham hasn't, so it's, it's one of those things that, you know, I think they would rather unload the entire six acres. Freeze it up for them, but, so I think they might be willing to take less than that, but I can't say that for sure.
And two other things here is that, let's keep in mind also, this is right across the street from our largest retailer. So the value there, I think, also has some considerable value. And the last thing is, is that if we don't do this, we go back to sort of this piecemeal approach where, let's say we have a survey that comes back and we approve a ballot issue for a senior wellness center, it goes to the ballot box, comes back glowingly accepted, then we're on the hook for finding land for a senior center. We may be on the land, you know, hook for finding land for additional facilities out there. So you go into this pattern, if you will, of biting off these little pieces, and believe me, I think you end up paying a lot more for your land in the long run by doing this in this way. So, just the last thing I wanted to add.
Alderman Saunders.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not gonna give you anything about my credentials, but I am pretty familiar with property prices, both residential, land, lot, commercial, industrial. I have the second largest appraisal company in the state of Arkansas. And what I've seen in the last four to five years is property values going down. What we've heard here tonight is true. It probably has gone from 5 to 350. There is no guarantee that it's going to go back up. Look at the economy. Look at unemployment. Look at the way our dollar is being printed right now and the inflation coming at us. We might end up having to eat that on a bet that someday we get to use it for city facilities. Why don't we capitalize on what we're doing right now? And granted, we're getting a good price on the fire station. We're accomplishing our original goal. But I don't think we need to be sitting on a whole bunch more property. We have land out by the middle school that can be used for the Senior Citizen Center. Part of it's out of the floodplain, certainly enough, okay? We also have property up here, we've got property all over, well, we've got other properties in Malmell. Do we really need to invest anymore? Second, third, I hold again, you're talking about putting at the city center on the corner of a lot that has Willistee Park on one side, residential on everything else, looking at the truck wells at the back of a Kroger store. I don't think that's an ideal location for all these city facilities. I think they, they need to be more centrally located. They need to be more accessible. You got one entrance egress on that six acres, the way I see it here. Okay? You're not gonna do a curb cut on Odom. Can't do anymore on, on Club Manor to service this property.
Yes, you can.
Well, you can, but to service this property, why would you?
Yes, you can.
Technically, you can.
Okay.
Would it be reasonable, prudent, financially advisable to do that? Probably not.
Yeah, I can't answer that question.
Yeah, but, um, um, I, there's no way I can support with us just going out and collecting land now. Thank you.
Alderman Lewis.
Certainly have a respect for the credentials. If you have an alternative in mind that would perhaps solve, I think, some of the challenges that were laid out in the strategic plan, I'd be delighted to hear it. I can imagine a similar conversation having taken place in this city many years ago as to whether or not we oughta make the investment of annexation toward Interstate 430. We did not do that. I look back on that as one of the hallmark quintessential mistakes of this city. Now, I'm sure that it was a mistake that was made with the best of intentions, perhaps by people that said, "We cannot grow that fast," or "We shouldn't make that investment. There's too many uncertainties in adding all of these incorporated lands into our city if we can afford it." But there comes a point where you have to consider the fact that, is this worth this opportunity? Otherwise, it will close. And I understand your dubiousness when it comes to the economy. I share in it. Certainly, I think our ballots, if you look at the presidential election, are probably quite similar. We have a lot of similar feelings on that, sir. But I am not going to let anxiety or doubt about the future keep this city perhaps in check from maybe doing some of the things that are part of that plan. And the last thing I'll say is that, let's not repeat the mistakes of the past here, and we're just talking about looking at an offer. We can always look at it and then turn it down.
Alderman Johnson.
Just one comment, you know, I, I'm getting one problem confused with the other. I'm all for buying the land and for the potential and everything, but remember, when we do it, we haven't committed, that's where we're gonna be, build our fire station. In other words, there's that piece of land still across the way. These people will be back in here again. In other words, to, in other words, if we, if we buy it, we need to know what we're gonna do with it. Is it a fire station, or is we moving it for that reason? I, I have, I have no problem. I think that's open space over there, and I, I'll defend my people from that standpoint. But by the same token, we're not, all we're doing is talking about buying the land, I think, and you, the mayor has a very nice layout to put the fire station there. I think it's a great effort on his part, but we still got the same problem. Are we gonna build it there? Because they'll be back in here if we go back to the other plan. So, you know, we got a couple of plans here working against us, not against us, but working, and I think it's good that we're clearing it out and trying to analyze it all and everything, but hey, land investment in Malmell, Track D, this property, it's gotta be good for the city, one way or another. We can use it somehow. We got, I'm not gonna go into that, but we got $5 million sitting in the well that are people's money, that we do nothing with. We don't even get interest on it hardly.
Alderman Ho.
I'm wondering, is Alderman Johnson saying that he doesn't know if the people that are over on Club Manor will be happy with the land we're talking about purchasing for the?
Oh, they would be, they'll be tickled to death. They're in my ward, I can guarantee you, they'll be thrilled to death.
I thought that's why we had started pursuing this in the first place, that we had decided.
I think that's exactly.
That they were so unhappy that we were willing to pursue.
And I think that was a great effort.
Other land.
Mm-hmm. And I think that was a great effort on the mayor's part, and I'm proud of him for doing it and everything. He, he exercised interest in the people and expressed it, and said, "Hey, we'll look at alternatives." And he came up with an alternative. Now, that alternative has grown into a, a great big nice thing that I'm very much for too. So hey, I'd, I'd vote to have the fire station there, and I'd vote to build whatever the city wants to build, on our, all our complexes. We can't go wrong with the way we're doing it. We satisfy the people, but it's gonna come back to you. Do you wanna spend the money because we're gonna move the fire station over there?
Well, we are just proposing to look at purchasing the entire thing. It doesn't mean that we're going to accept that offer. We just want to look at it and see what it would cost, and then we will have some good numbers to decide.
I agree.
The, the question was, would y'all let me pursue it, basically? And, and the, I will tell you, I mean, the plan is to locate the fire station on Lot 4. There's, no matter what happens with the rest of the tract, I mean, the, the, the goal is to locate the fire station on Lot 4. That still requires a conditional use permit by the Planning Commission, by this council. So you have the ultimate say on that too, not me. So, I mean, yes, the intent is to put the fire station there, but it ultimately comes back to the council whether they allow the fire station to go there. Now, I'm not purchasing, in my offers, I haven't put in there that is conditional on getting approval from ourselves. I, I think that is not fair to the seller that, that I put that contingency on there. If I, if I was an outside person purchasing that land for use to go there, I would've put that in there, but, but I have a hard time telling them that, that you gotta wait until I find out if my council's gonna approve this piece of property. So, yes, the intent is to put the fire station there, but this council could still turn that down. So I want that very clear also, on Lot 4, so.
Do we need a motion if we do?
We got it, we got it, we got it, we got it.
I already got a second.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the floor to allow me to make an offer on the entire six acres.
Good deal.
But it would, it would still come back to the council before it was, or, yeah, before it was approved to purchase. Is there any more discussion on that motion? If not, all is in favor, please signify as saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no.
No.
Okay. Who knows? Okay, alright, okay. So motion passes. Alright, thank you very much. Next item is the Parking and Traffic Committee. We have a request to locate a four-way stop at Arnold Palmer and Barber Cove/Barber Drive. And in order to do that, we have to, the Parking and Traffic Committee has to meet, and so that would require the aldermen that are in that ward to serve on the Traffic Committee along with the Public Works Director, the Chief of Police, and the mayor. But while we're having a Traffic Committee, I wanted to allow the council time if they know something else that's out there that needs to be brought before the Parking and Traffic Committee to, to bring it forward, but we need to notice it and specifically state what that meeting is for, and then we need a date so that we can advertise it. And I do have one public comment that wants to speak on that. So Alderman Kelly, do you wanna hold your comments till you hear that, or?
I will.
Okay, alright. Mr. Leonard Unruh.
Leonard Unruh, 68, Blue Mountain Drive. Most of what I was gonna say, and the mayor clarified, and basically, I don't have anything to say, other than when you were talking about that intersection, and it's only Ward 3, unfortunately, that's my ward, you might wanna think about it, the other wards, 'cause we, I don't drive around just in Ward 3. I drive through the, some of the other wards, getting to some of the places. So you might wanna think about the impact you have in here, might have, how it impacts the rest of the city.
Well, the council has to, it still goes before the entire council, basically, to report to them. They don't necessarily vote on it, but they can amend it, approve it, or.
Reject.
Reject it, yes, the wording that's in there, so.
Right.
So it does get reported back to the entire council.
There's still a chance for.
And, and it's a public meeting. Anybody's welcome to come and attend the meeting also, so it's not just a meeting for an exclusive club.
Yeah. The other thing I just remembered, on the committee itself, is there some reason why citizens aren't a part of that committee?
Because it's not in the ordinance.
Ah, can, Adam Secretary, or Matt, City Attorney, I presume that can be amended?
Council can't amend the ordinance.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Alderman Kelly.
There is one area that I have some undue concern about, and that's the intersection of Odom and Ridgeland and Naylor. That's a, pretty much a blind spot coming over the hill. When you pull out of that neighborhood, I've almost been T-boned there a couple of times. It's a, it's a blind spot looking down the hill because of the trees, coming up over the hill onto that intersection. It's a blind spot coming over the hill. I think it needs to be looked into, because the people are moving quite fast on North Odom as well.
Okay, I, I do think that's been looked at before, but we, I mean, it can be considered, so.
Thank you.
Yep. Alderman Ho.
Well, as you know, Diamond Point and North Odom are, is the very same thing, and we have looked at that in the past. I cannot imagine a four-way stop sign out there on Odom. I don't know what the answer is, but if you figure out something on Ridgeland, we'd like the same thing on Diamond Point, but that's not why I had my light on. And this just really reminded me of something else. We've got this big pothole over here in this parking lot where Walmart is.
Yes, ma'am.
Is there anything that you can do to encourage those people to take care of it?
I've encouraged everybody that's called me to call the owner of that center.
Do you have a telephone number that you can give people?
I don't have, I don't have one. I give them the name of the, the group that owns it. No.
Neighborhood market, Walmart.
It's Macarley Properties, but...
Shouldn't we be able to city, I mean, that's unacceptable.
Well, it's private property.
I know that, but, I mean, and I know we're not gonna, we're not gonna repair it, and I'm not asking you to.
Right, but I don't even know that that's, I mean...
I mean, a car, a small car could fall in that and have trouble getting it.
It is a deep hole, I will not deny that. But it's, I don't know that there's anything, it's not a nuisance as far, I mean, basically, you know, I don't think it's a nuisance. I mean, I, I don't think it makes...
Your car fell in there, it'd be a nuisance.
Well, you're right, I'd have to repair my car, but I, I know to go around that hole. But it's one of those things that we, I mean, it's, it's similar to what we were talking about earlier tonight. It's, it's where do you stop, where does the city's role stop? I mean, we had one gentleman speaking about the role of government, you know, is only here to, to do certain things, and I think you're taking it beyond that measure. I mean, if people quit shopping there, I bet they would repair that hole, you know? So, it's one of those type things. And then, and we run into it all along that area, the pri, and that's why we, well, that's a little different than the private drive, but we deal with it up on the private drive on the north end of there.
I mean, I hesitate to use the word boycott, 'cause I got in trouble.
Yeah, don't use that word, yeah.
But maybe that's what we need to do.
Yeah, well, we will try to contact the property owners and let them know that we're getting a lot of complaints about it, but that's the best I can do.
Go to Kroger, don't go to, go to Walmart.
Yeah, stop.
Well, there are many other businesses in that shopping center besides Walmart.
But that is not something that would be considered by the Parking and Traffic Committee.
Right.
Alderman Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. Can you first, can you, can you tell me why we need traffic control at the intersection of Barber Cove and Arnold Palmer?
Sight distance is what has been the issue. There's, there, the original request came in requesting a speed hump in that area, and we did some speed studies. And actually, when I went out to meet with Ms. Green on a drainage issue, all the residents at the end of Barber Cove down there told me that they cannot pull out of their intersection because of the, the curve and the hill and some vegetation that is in that area. And we have the visibility at the corners, but some of the vegetation is further up, it's not on the corner that's blocking their view. So, they say they're halfway out in the street before they can see a car that's coming. And I had not even considered there being a problem there till I met with them on the drainage issue, and they're the ones that brought it up, that there was an issue there. And it's still being portrayed as, as an issue from both directions now, from out of Barber right there. And there's a, there's a similar type, and this is kinda how I think it came about, 'cause it was, well, you got one just over here, there's a similar four-way stop at Trevino and, is it Hogan? Yes, Hogan Drive right there. And then they're, you know, they're, they're about the same distance from Club Manor, and it's a very similar type situation.
Well, you know what, that's my intersection.
Right, 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 right. I understand, I understand, I understand.
I'm through there all the time. I do understand there's a problem with that hill there by where Dean Elliott lives, that, and it does this. But the speed limit there is 25 miles an hour, and I've never had problems with people that were driving about the speed limit, even 30. The problem's people drive 45 through there.
Well, the speed study didn't indicate there was a lot of people doing 45, I will say that.
Maybe not a lot, but it only takes one to cause a wreck.
I, I'm not, yeah, I understand that, I understand that.
I mean, it's okay with me, it's not gonna hurt me one way or the other, but I'm just questioning, you know, if people are driving 25 miles an hour, you can see them way off. I can.
I, I don't necessarily disagree with that, but the, the request has been made, and so we, we need to move forward with it, is what we need to do. So, we need to have a committee meeting, so...
Do we need a motion?
Uh, no, I'll need a date is what I'm gonna need, so, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
That was necessary.
Yeah, yeah. No, I don't need a, I don't need, we, we have to advertise it and we have to, but I need a date in order to put it on there, and then, I was just trying to figure out if anything else we needed to address at that meeting. Alderman Johnson?
Yes, just very simply, I have been there, I've seen, witnessed it, and I truly believe that it is a problem, and we're going through the right methods to go to the commission and, or the, whatever we call it.
Committee.
Committee and, and everything like that. Hey, if a stop sign requires people to stop, and it's a little safer, it's not a major deal. I'm like the mayor, the speed humps, I had a lot to do with putting speed humps in. They're agitating, but a stop sign doesn't hurt anybody. And if you, if you go down and watch what goes on in the morning, the people get bypassing two traffic lights, turn up Club Manor, and go up to Arnold Palmer, and go straight across to get on the boulevard by passing the two stoplights. Well, it's a heavy, in the morning primarily, there's a heavy traffic load that comes out of there. There's also a bus stop right there where the bus stops every day and loads of kids, and loads of kids and everything. If we save one kid's life, you know, it'd be worth it. Hey, I mean, it's not my decision, the committee will make the decision, but I think you need to go, can, and look at it because it's a lot different than you consider when you sit down and look at it.
I live there.
Hey, I drive there every day, every day of my life. You come out, go, you come out and go right. I, I drive the Arnold Palmer every day, so...
Alderman Mosley?
I was just gonna say, if we, if we address that one intersection, I suppose it takes two aldermen from Ward Three and two aldermen from Ward One.
Yeah.
It's, it cuts right through there, we're right next to it.
Does it really?
Yeah, Arnold Palmer is the dividing line.
Okay, then it will take all four aldermen, you're correct.
We're gonna have a real party.
I, I didn't, I didn't look at it that close, but yeah, it'll take all four aldermen if it's in both wards, 'cause the sign will be in, we'll be placing them in two different wards.
You're right, you're right. I, I didn't really wanna be involved in that decision.
I'm glad you pointed it out, that you get to be part of it.
We could make it a three-way stop sign.
No, let's, don't do that.
No, don't, don't do that.
Don't do that, and it, it confuses people really bad.
Well, they, they have a stop sign on their side, and we have a stop sign on our side. We're talking in the middle and everything, so I, I understand where you're coming from, but you have a stop sign coming out.
That is a good point. I don't know if it is, well, since the other half of the street, okay.
So, what are the dates proposed?
Well, there, there are no dates proposed. And I need you to tell me, I mean, I guess, and that, you know, I opened up a can of worms earlier when I said we might use the Monday night, but I will tell you that, all right, now, I don't know where my calendar went.
The final Monday.
Uh, but we need to notice it, and we think we need to do it for se, at least seven days, is what we're thinking. Where was that?
Well, it's Memorial Day.
Oh, there it is, I covered it up. All right, so, if we noticed it, and this is just for instance, on the 14th, which is a day the paper comes out, I wouldn't do it before the 20th, is what I wouldn't do. We have a council meeting on the 19th, and then the 20th would be a Tuesday night immediately after that. Planning Commission meets on the 22nd, and then Memorial Day is the 26th, and the 29th would be another Thursday night. I need to hold the 27th open because of another issue I'm dealing with, I may be at the Corum Court on the 27th.
The 20th is a task force meeting.
The 20th is a task force meeting, okay. So, what about the 29th of May? Does anybody know anything on that night?
We're talking May, right?
Right, May, May 29th. Do what?
My kids have baseball games.
Oh, they do? All right. You don't have to be there then.
Yeah, you, you get a pass. He's got a pass.
All right, all right. Tendrily, let's put down the 29th, let me know if you would, if that's a problem, May the 29th. It'd be 6 o'clock.
6 o'clock.
Yes. Let me know if that's a problem. And we won't, we don't have to notice it till later in the week, but I need to know something. Please let me know by Wednesday if you can.
Okay with me.
Okay, if it's a problem with somebody, let me know. And it may right now only be the, the four aldermen that we talked about earlier, Ward Three and Ward One, so...
Unless you look at Alderman Kelly's issue.
Yeah, well, and that's it. If we take that one up, then it, that's Ward Two?
Two.
All of it in Two?
Two and Three?
All in Two.
All in Two, okay.
Come on, you gotta find something.
I'm okay with that. I'm okay.
Okay, all right. So, we'd, we'd, we'd look at both of those items right now.
Ridgeland's border though.
Oh, come on now.
It is.
It is Four.
Ridgeland's the border.
What is?
Ridgeland is the center line between Four and Two.
That is true.
Oh, this gets so much better.
I don't think I have to come to those.
No, you don't have to come to those, I may make you though. All right, so look, everybody look at the 29th and see if that's an issue for them, and let me know by Wednesday, please.
Good for me.
All right. All right.
We could have another council meeting that same night.
We could.
They're all here.
Yeah. All right, let's move on to mayor's comments. Bond project surveys, they went out. I had a card from Mr. Bullington that he wanted to speak, I think he left on that, so, sorry. The, the bond project survey, they were mailed last Wednesday, people started receiving them on Thursday, I received mine at my house on Friday. As of 5:30 today, we had 169 responses turned in, either online or mailed back to us. So, the, it's going fairly well. If you do an average of 55 a day, basically, is what's come in, 55 points, something if I'm, and I'm saying, since not everybody had it till Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, that's 55 per day that we're receiving. Now, you know, I don't, that's not statistical or anything like that, it's just, so we, we, that would get us about 800 responses in, in a two-week period, if you look at it that way. So, just wanted y'all aware of that. The... The tornado on 427 that impacted a large part of Faulkner County, including Bologna and Mayflower, it also impacted West Pulaski County, Perrin, and then went up through White County and affected a lot of small communities up there. I do need to praise the Maumell Police and Fire Personnel that responded to Mayflower on Sunday evening immediately after the storm. They went to provide assistance to a neighboring community, and we were actually asked into the community by a volunteer fire department that was overwhelmed at the time, just trying to assess everything. But our Chief Williams and Chief Payne set up a, 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 a command center and, and helped with search and rescue and that. Also, Maumell Animal Services, they've worked all week recovering lost pets, helping people with feeding their pets and providing aid to injured dogs and cats, and, and Maumell Friends of the Animals has also been instrumental in paying for care to the vets that have been taken, to the vets, and, and they're paying for surgeries and then trying to reunite the pets with the families. And Maumell Citizens have been very gracious in donating feed necessary for the numerous animals that have been recovered. We had five city employees that had homes that were either damaged or destroyed in the Mayflower area, so just remember them if you would. And we have several places in Maumell that are collecting donations, Shepherd of Peace Lutheran Church, the Maumell First United Methodist Church, and Chamber Commerce are all accepting donations to help with this relief. It missed us by about two to two and a half miles, so it could be us that were right in the middle of that storm. The tornado that hit Bologna three years ago was even closer than that. So, it's, you know, we're barely out of the path of two major tornadoes here in three years. And if you remember last year, one basically went over Maumell and touched down in the Morgan area. So, so it might be, you know, I, I don't wanna say we've been lucky, I just wanna say that, you know, we've been not impacted by one yet, and, but we, we learn by going and helping other communities, so hopefully, we will be prepared if one of them actually does impact Maumell one day.
Alderman Johnson?
Just for your information and everything, the superintendent of our schools at Academic Plus, he lost his house totally and everything. And another interesting one, a business owner in Maumell and his father live side by side, they both lost their houses in Mayflower. And right at this weekend, they were trying to relocate the liquor store over to the new liquor store, and their houses are down in, in Mayflower. So, it's, it's been, had an impact on our city in a lot of respects of some key people and the business owners and, but, you know, and the charter school superintendent, he, you know, he just going right about business as usual.
Okay, and so, so be mindful of everybody. I do wanna say one more thing, there's a baseball game tomorrow at 5:30 at Dicky Stevens Park. It's to benefit both Bologna and Mayflower. It's called the, well, they're both called Eagles, so it's something about soar with the Eagles or...
The Eagles Nest or something.
Yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, rebuild the Eagles Nest, that's what it's called, 'cause both the schools are Eagles. But they're not charging admission, they're taking donations. So, if you got time to run out there tomorrow and go watch a high school baseball game, you can help out two communities.
Also, there is a dollar donation per attendee that will be made up to, I think, 10,000 people if they get that. And I think it's a dollar for two different companies, if I'm not mistaken. I don't know if they're sharing, okay, so, an additional chance for them to raise money just by you attending as well.
By you attending it, so if you got a chance, go do that.
10,000 people would be a lot, that would be, mean a lot.
Maumell Baseball Association is also collecting a minimum $1 gate this week. All of those proceeds are going to relief effort as well, so right here in, in Maumell.
Fantastic.
So, so Arkansans are stepping up, they really are, with either volunteering to remove trees or helping in some way. I was in Mayflower on Friday and ran into Maumell residents all over Mayflower, so, but they were there helping. So, it was a really good feeling to see that. I wanna make you aware of something that will be on the next council's agenda. If you remember back in the budget discussion when we talked about the ladder truck and Chief Glenn had mentioned there might be a demo truck that would be available, well, there's a demo truck that has been almost completed. It, it's 95% complete, and they will, they will be taking it to a show this summer. Immediately after that show, it will be available for purchase. Well, the, the opportunity has come up that we might be able to purchase that truck, and so Chief Payne and Captain Holmes are gonna make a presentation at the next meeting to the council, and we'll be asking you to, to make a decision on that fire truck at that time. You'll have all the information prior to the meeting so that you can make a informed decision. If you remember, the council set aside a million dollars in the budget to purchase that, but the whole concept of, we would come back to the council before we spent that dollars, and that's, so that's what we're doing right now. The, this truck was actually started April of last year, so that is how long it takes to manufacture one of these trucks. Or that's when the order was placed, let me say that, that's when the order was placed for this truck as a truck to be used at this show. And so, it, it would be purchased through a cooperative purchasing group is, is the plan right now. We're still working on some of the details of that also. So, but it, it's, it's different than, we would design a truck and then send it out, and I don't wanna take away anything from the presentation that the chief and Captain Holmes will make, but it, it's, it's a truck that's gonna be very close to what we had specked out in our look at trucks for this area, so it's very, very close to that. So, so that will be before you at the next meeting, I just wanted to make you aware of that. The only other thing that I need to make you aware of is that early voting started today for the May primary, the vote is actually May the 20th, but the voting is taking place from 10 to 6 on weekdays and 10 to 4 on Saturdays at the Jess Odom Community Center. So, you can vote in advance, and I see Alderman Kelly's already voted today, and Alderman Johnson voted today, so, so there's, some of us are behind already, so... But just remember, that is ongoing. Next item is the Planning Commission report. Alderman Anderson?
Yeah, I got a lucky one, I have a draw. There was just one, there was no old business, there was just one issue of new business, broken into three parts. The owners of the White Wagon Farm Nursery down the, down 365 fall within our jurisdiction, so they're asking to sell that property and make it into subdivision, so they ask for the, the variance needed to break it into, what is it, 70 to 132 Streets?
The, the length of the street.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the street length. And then they asked for a variance for, which was passed unanimously, a variance for the pipe stem access, which was passed unanimously, and then the preliminary plat was passed unanimously.
Where was that located?
At the, the White Wagon Farm Nursery down 365.
Down by Oak Grove Fire, Fire Department Station. It's down by O'Groves Fire Department Station.
That was it?
Thank you, Alderman Anderson. Alderman's comments? Alderman Saunders?
Thanks, Mayor. I may be asking for your help here. I have noticed recently, I turn off Arnold Palmer onto the Boulevard and head towards Walmart, that direction, 430. I've seen people getting tickets out there for speeding. Now, I don't know, I'll qualify. I don't know if you turn from Odom onto the Boulevard, whether there's a speed limit sign there or not, because I don't use that one. But I do know coming off Arnold Palmer, I see one little sign about this big that's orange that sits way back off over there. And if, and are we holding a speed limit there at 30 miles an hour?
During construction, we do.
Okay. I would hope that we could advertise the speed limit a little better. If I didn't know, I turn off of Arnold Palmer onto the Boulevard, I'm already, I'll probably get three tickets before I even see that sign way down there, if I see it. I mean, drive by there, look at that sign.
Well, but it's, it's a construction sign. It's not, it's not a normal speed limit sign that's normally there. That is correct. But the barrels, everything else should indicate that you're in a construction zone, so.
Yeah, but barrels, is there a speed limit associated with that?
No, there's not, but I understand. But I, but I'm saying that, you know, you should be looking for warning signs in that area, is what I would say, so, to help, yeah.
But you know, it would be easy for me, you know, one of Chief Williams policemen sitting out there. I could've gotten a ticket today if I didn't know already, if I hadn't seen that little sign. I turned off Arnold Palmer onto the Boulevard, I could've had a ticket long before I ever got down that little thing.
I understand, yeah, but that...
Can't we put some kind of signage or...
Well, that's not us putting those signs up. That's the contractor. That's the contractor signs, and they're, they put the signs up per the, the plan that was approved, but we'll, I'll look into that, but that, hopefully, that's gonna be gone in about two weeks.
Well, that's good.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I, I hope so too, but yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm just...
Yeah, all right. I, I will look at the speed limit signs, I will. And then that has been brought up in several hour meetings that they probably needed more, because they're saying people aren't slowing down, and we said you probably need to put some more signs up.
I think there have been a lot of warnings given in that area.
Oh, warnings, okay. Well, I just trying to be fair to everybody, I mean...
And, and the officers are too. I, I promise you, I've only seen, we've only actually had one speeding ticket that I prosecuted. Those have been largely warnings in that area.
Well, that, that's good.
Alderman Hoag?
I just wanted to say that the annexation task force met on the 22nd, and again, tonight. We are moving along. We have also added Barry Heller to the task force. We are on the water meeting agenda with questions that we'd like to ask the directors. So we'll be doing that, and we had quite a, quite a meeting at 5 o'clock. We had people show up from Morgan that had heard about it, that thought they were immediately gonna be pulled into Malmell, but with suredom that was not happening. But we're moving along and hopeful that we're going to get this accomplished.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Lewis?
Thank you to Alderman Hoag for the expeditious fashion in which that committee is moving. It's impressive. Three things I did wanna add in. Oh, one other thing, please. I understand about the speed limit, but don't divert that crew. Let them do their thing. We don't want them distracted. Entergy outages. We have had a little bit of a peak in some of them. One of them, of course, was storm-related. Yesterday was relatively hot, but we did have one late in the evening that lasted for a little while, I believe. And so we've seen a little bit of an uptick, and I would like to know, if you could talk to our energy representative, if these outages have been sort of that same problem that we've had in the past.
Well, this is the first I knew about it today. I got a, I was contacted by someone that lived on Ninth Fairway Loop, said that they've had three outages the past three Sunday nights, but I was not aware of that. No one had let me know that. And so I did contact our customer service rep this afternoon by email, and he said he would check into it.
Terrific. Thank you very much. Also, Deco, which you said earlier to compliment Animal Services for the job they've done, some of those pictures are extremely heartwarming. And also, to thank Chief Payne and the Fire Department in particular, Code Red did a great job that night. I thought I got summoned to the Fire Department there for just a moment. That was a little different, but nevertheless, prior to the, I wanna say that was about almost a one-minute lead time on that telephone call to my mobile phone to let us know that the tornado was, you know, inbound. And so very much appreciate that, and I think that program is working wonderfully. Okay, sorry, chief. All of the above, uniformed personnel. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes.
Alderman Johnson?
Follow up with what he said. Unfortunately, my wife has it on her phone, my phone, and got it on. She bought one of those machines. Man, we had all kinds of warning that everything was going. But, you know, one of the things that I really wanted to mention here, and I don't know, there's nothing anybody can do about it, but our sales tax reports, it just seemed to be up and down, and, you know, never any consistency that where we can predict anything, you know, and I know different times they collect more taxes than others and everything, but I just was looking at it today and said, you know, golly, you would at least be able to look at January and February and have some consistency, but it's not, not always real consistent. And hey, a lot of our revenues are depending on city sales tax and, and county sales tax, and I know there's nothing we can do about it, but, you know, keep, keep an eye on it. I don't know what we could do, but anyway.
Kicked in the teeth last month.
Yeah. Thanks. Jackie's spitting all I got.
Go buy more groceries. Any other Alderman's comments? Madam City Attorney?
No, sir.
Mr. City Clerk? I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. I have a second? Did I hear a second? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye, yes.
Meeting is adjourned.